All right, good morning. Good morning and welcome to the June 17th, 2025 Regular Board of Supervisors Meeting. We will call this meeting to order here at 9:00 AM and as customary, we'll start out with a moment of silence. And I think we have a couple here, so you want to start out and then Vice Chair, you'll go second.
Unfortunately, last week, we had a moment of silence for a drowning and we had another drowning from a resident from the city of Clear Lake that occurred in Highland Springs. Kimberly K. Hill, who was 42, leaves behind family, friends, community members who are just distraught and asking questions. I do want to say, the bystanders who tried to revive Kimberly, just want to, I don't know what kind of appreciation I can provide, but like, thank you for going out of your way to try and save somebody's life. It's, we hear oftentimes about the unsung heroes of people that try to do things, maybe even beyond their understanding or knowledge, just trying to do something and that's, I'm sure the family appreciates the effort and unfortunately, she was not revived and passed away from her drowning. And so, please be safe out there. We do have a very full lake, we have multiple bodies of water, we have seen now three separate drownings in three separate bodies of water. Please have a vest, make sure you have friends nearby that know what you're doing, where you're going. It's unfortunate, the loss of life that we've had so far in our lakes and I hope that we can pass the rest of the summer without another incident happening. So today, I'd like to hold our thoughts and prayers for Kimberly Cahill.
I'll go ahead, Vice Chair.
Next, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for John Dye. He was a dedicated public servant who helped shape the city of Lakeport across three terms on the city council from 1980 to 1992, including two terms of mayor. John was also an educator at Clear Lake High School and a pastor at Upper Lake Baptist Church. Councilmember Dye's tenure spanned a pivotal era of growth, infrastructure investment, and community pride. In 1986, he helped launch the process and design for the current Lakeport City Hall, which had been the former Pacific Bell, Pacific Bell Building. Two years later, in 1988, he helped welcome hundreds of residents to Lakeport's Centennial Celebration, which was a once-in-a-century event that honored the city's history and looked forward to the future. He was also very involved in pivotal renovations of Library Park to its current design today, as well as modernizing a lot of infrastructure in the city of Lakeport. Next, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for Lottie Parlette, who passed away just late last month at the age of 91. She was born in Nuremberg, Germany. Her early years were marked by the hardship of World War II. She endured the devastation of the Allied bombings and subsequent destruction of her hometown. In the challenging years that followed, she subsisted on minimal rations, demonstrating resilience and fortitude. Around 1950, she met a young US serviceman, Ken Parlette, Senior, and after marrying in her hometown, they moved to California. She was a more than 50-year resident of Lake County, moving here in 1970 with her husband to own the Lakeport purity store. Over the years, they expanded operations, acquiring additional stores in Clear Lake and Lucerne. Over the past 40 years, Lottie continued bookkeeping work at the Lucerne location, Lakeview Market. The Lakeview Market is still in the family and run by Lottie's son Kenny and his wife, Deena. She's survived by her children and numerous grandchildren. Her legacy is one of strength, compassion, and unwavering dedication to her family and community. She will be missed and remembered by all who knew her. Lastly, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for the Minnesota lawmakers who were attacked and murdered and shot inside their homes in the middle of the night in the state of Minnesota over this past weekend. State Representative Melissa Hortman and her husband were killed. State Senator John Hoffman and his wife were wounded in this politically targeted, motivated attack on our democracy. So let's have those families in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Megan Morgan, can you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for that. There we go. Next is a consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Do we have any today?
We do not, sir.
All right, we do not have any. Item number four, item number five, approval of consent agenda. I know that we do have one, 5.14, that'll be pulled to discuss further later. Let's see, and so just as you know, consent agenda items are usually non-controversial, but anyone from the board or anyone from the public can pull for further discussion. If there is, is there any at this time from the board, aside from 5.14? All right, not hearing any. I'll open it up to the public if there's any one that would like to pull a consent agenda item. Any on Zoom?
Not only on consent.
All right, not hearing any. We'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 514.
A second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right. Next, we have our, let me say timed items, but there we go. We are at minus, okay, perfect. So we have our timed items. First is public input. Public input, if you have either set up ahead of time with admin or if you would fill out some paperwork here at the front, you can come up and speak for three minutes on a item that's not on the agenda. Just know that there will be, no, there will not be anyone addressing that in this meeting today, but it is an opportunity for you to address something that involves the county and that you'd like to bring up. So we'll start out, is there, I know that there's some in the chambers, I know I have one right here, Mr. Nudow. Did you want to come up?
This is my fourth or maybe fifth time here. Still here regarding the Lucerne Castle. I was told that the county council would be involved, he apparently doesn't know. So to review, I'm interested in purchasing the castle in Lucerne, trying to, I think it would be a very large contributor to the economy of Lucerne and Lake County. And one of the issues is that in purchasing it, is that the special districts has said that we're going to have to, whoever buys it is going to have to pay an enormous amount of money just to return to, in terms of its sewer usage. They're talking about $400,000 plus potentially millions of dollars if in fact the capacity's not adequate. And so, being a prudent buyer, I'd like to know where they get that number and where, I understand how they get the number, I don't understand where the law is that says that they have the right to charge that. And I wrote multiple times, I, last time I wrote, I detailed it very nicely, I said, here are my questions, I don't understand this. Again, I haven't gotten a response, and it's been six months now and I still haven't found out where this number comes from, where the law is that allows them to charge what they're going to charge for an existing building that presumably was hooked into the sewer system when the sewer system was first put around. Everything they point to, in my interpretation of what I'm reading, they don't point out any specific code section or specific rule, they just keep throwing this thing at me and saying, here, it's in here somewhere. And everything that I see talks about new construction and new connections. And so I don't know if they have the right, I asked, have you ever done this before with anyone else? Didn't get any answer. So I was told that county council would be asked and so I'm asking, I guess directly to county council if you could, I don't know if I can do that, but it would be nice to find out where this is. You know, I'm hoping the board wants to see this castle produce, you know, benefits and income to this, to the area, but I'm not getting any help. So again, if I could just find out why it is that they're being charged this enormous amount of money. And again, it's potentially, you know, if the capacity is not adequate, whoever buys this is going to have to rip up the streets, increase the sewer lines, possibly pay for a whole new treatment plan, I mean, we're talking potentially millions of dollars. And my understanding is they're going to want that buyer to pay for that. I have no idea if that's going to come to fruition, if that's going to be the thing. I can't buy this thing unless, no one can, I don't think, unless they know how much they're going to pay for it. And, and it's been six months, all right? So it would be nice if I got an answer at some point. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Amanda?
Good morning, Lake County Board of Supervisors. My name is Amanda Martin, I'm the CEO of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to take this opportunity to give you some updates since I last presented to you. So first off, thank you for that opportunity to present to you last month. And Supervisor Paeska, thank you for your recommendation to include the Canockdye Regional Trails in the Lake Life magazine. We dedicated half of our chamber spread to that new site, so we're excited to see that. The Lake Life magazine is officially to the printers, so we're happy about that and it'll be out in about three weeks. So we'll have 20,000 copies of that magazine, so please keep that in mind if you want any yourself or know anybody that would, I put some to use. So what else do we have here? So thank you Chair Crandall and Supervisor Sabatier for partnering with us on the Lake Pillsbury Town Hall and for your participation in the panel. We've got a lot of good feedback from the community about providing that forum for education for the community and also the fact that it was a balanced panel. So I know that our Board of Directors are really interested in doing more town halls, so please keep us at the Lake County Chamber of Commerce in mind for any critical issues that you'd like to bring more awareness to the community about. And our last update is our joint mixer with the Calistoga Chamber was a big success. We just had it last Wednesday at the Greenview. We had 140 people who came out to it. Thank you Supervisor Owen for being there. I know a number of you wanted to be there as well. So that was a great success. We joined up with Calistoga Chamber and then we had the Guenoc Valley Resort there presenting. They gave a good 25-minute presentation, they took Q and A after. And it was also nice to see that Kevin Case was the second to last person to leave the mixer, right before me, because he was there taking all the questions and engaging with everybody that he could. So yeah, those are the quick updates and I just wanted to use this opportunity to provide those for you. So thank you, have a good day.
Thank you.
Do I need to fill this out?
Yeah, I just have it filled out, just for the record. All right, are there any other? All right, Sterling?
Good morning, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I emailed all of you guys last night, I drafted a letter about special districts in Robyn Borey about the matters of our water out here, and I only have three minutes, so I have a couple matters, so I want to make sure that you guys all know that you got that email and hopefully I can hear from you guys. But the matter for today is going to be the urgent request for a secondary access route and green statement of Spring Valley on the hazardous mitigation list. My name is Sterling Wellman and I am a resident of Spring Valley, a community of over 1,000 residents in Clear Lake Oaks. I am writing to express my, my, sorry, express a longstanding concern about the lack of safety emergency access in and out of our community. Spring Valley currently has only one way in and one way out via New Long Valley Road, which poses an extreme risk in the event of wildfire, evacuation, or other emergencies. This violates both common sense and key legal requirements regard it, regarding public safety. According to California Code of Regulation Title 14, Section 1273.01, and supported by the California Fire Code and Public Resource Code 4290 and 4291, subdivisions with 30 or more homes located in a fire-prone area are required to have at least two separate and approved means of emergency access. These laws exist to ensure the residents have a viable evacuation route and to, and that emergency personnel can enter and exit without obstruction during the disaster. The former Old Long Valley Road Bridge, which previously served as an alternative exit, was destroyed decades ago and the more than 30 years since, the county has not rebuilt this critical second access route, leaving Spring Valley residents at an unnecessary risk. Recent events that, that urged. In November 2024, a diesel truck exploded on New Long Valley Road, igniting a fire and blocking the only exit. In August of 2024, a vehicle rolled over, blocked the road for over two hours while leaking fuel dangerously. Just in June of 2025, a fire broke out near New Long Valley and Highway 20, threatening the cutoff of all escape. In 2024, a fire was intentionally started on New Long Valley Road, which could have trapped everyone if had spread. Despite these clear threats, during the Earth Community Meeting in June, Glenn March stated that Spring Valley had been removed from the county's hazardous mitigation list. This is both unacceptable and reckless. Our community sits in a very, very high fire hazard severity zone and we lack the minimum infrastructure required to protect life and property under California law. I formally request that the Board of Supervisors, one, resolve Spring Valley, reinstate Spring Valley on the hazardous mitigation list.
Wrap up there, Sterling, please.
I'm sorry, what was that?
If you can wrap up, go ahead.
Yeah, I only have like two more things to go. Rebuild Old Long Valley Bridge, conduct a full and safety assessment of Spring Valley, report publicly on conditions of Indian Valley Dam and spillway, which is compromised, ensure compliance with California regulations, Pacifically Title 14, CCR 1273.01, and PRC 4290 and 4291.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
All right. Maria, did you came up? I don't know if you, okay, all right, is there any other public input online?
No one.
All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close that item for public input and move on to our next item, 6.2 Pet of the Week.
Hi, I am Officer Reel with Lake County MO Care and Control and this is Zeus. He's a four-month-old wire hair terrier mix. He's up for adoption at our shelter as of yesterday. He has another sibling in our, the kennel, which is a female. We also have, give or take about 20 small breed animals at the moment that are up for adoption, ranging from four months to four years of age. So if you're looking for a small furry companion, come on down to the shelter. That's yours. All right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
I love wire hairs.
I could do that. I know I could do.
All right. We'll move on to our next item, 6.3 New and Noteworthy at the Library. And I'm not sure, yep, there he is, Mr. Veach.
Hello. Just get started here.
Just get started here. So thank you, I am Christopher Veach, County Librarian, and thank you for giving me just a few minutes to talk about what's new and noteworthy at the library. And this month, I wanted to cover The Emperor of Gladness by Ocean Vuong. Vuong is a Vietnamese-American poet, essayist, and novelist, best known for his novel On Earth We're Briefly Gorgeous. He's received major awards like the winning award and the T. S. Eliot Prize, and he lives in Massachusetts with his partner Peter Biankowski. The Emperor of Gladness is his latest novel. It follows Hai, a nineteen-year-old living in Connecticut. Just as Hai is about to make a life-changing decision on a bridge, he's stopped by Grizina, an elderly woman with dementia. That chance encounter leads Hai to become her caretaker. Phoebe Farrell Sherman from Book Page writes, "The key to The Emperor of Gladness is that none of these characters see any hope of saving one another or even themselves. Instead, in being together, they simply find a way to continue. That alone is significant. It may be the project of a lifetime, and if it is, that's enough." The Emperor of Gladness is available now in print, audiobook, and ebook through the library system. You can request this book or other materials through our online library catalog, which has the combined resources of Lake, Sonoma, and Mendocino County library systems. And requesting items is completely free, and items are sent to your local branch for you to pick up. I also am excited to announce that summer reading with your library has begun. Adults, teens, kids, and even pre-K should make sure to sign up online at your local library location or and to enjoy reading more this summer. By signing up, you can earn points by reading library books. Once you reach one thousand points, you'll have the honor of having your name placed in a brand-new library book and get to be the first person to check it out. For kids, every forty points earns a sticker for their game card, and at two hundred points, they get to pick a prize from the prize box or a raffle ticket for a gift basket. Teens and adults earn a raffle entry for every two hundred points for a gift basket of books. In addition, this year, attending library events enters you to win themed gift baskets. All prizes are provided by the Friends of the Lake County Library. And as always, you can learn more about our library system at our website, library.lakcountyca.gov, or come visit your local library branch in Lakeport, Clear Lake, Middletown, Upper Lake, or on our bookmobile. Thanks again for listening to what's new and noteworthy at the library.
All right, thank you, Christopher. Did anyone, go ahead Supervisor.
I gotta say, the bookmobile and the parades is pretty cool. Thank you very much for making that happen.
It was a lot of fun for Mickey and Katie, who drove it in the parade, so yes, thanks.
All right, any other comments? Oh, go ahead, by all means.
Were you, are you planning to do the Middletown Days Parade coming up this weekend?
I don't know if we're doing that one. I'd have to double-check, but we are planning to do more parades as the year.
Very cool. Thank you.
All right, I'll open it up to the public. All right, I'll bring it back to the board. Next is our six point four, Presentation of Proclamation Designating June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five as Juneteenth National Freedom Day. Supervisor Sabatier will be reading this proclamation. And just as a note, Rick Mayo was going to be in the appointment, so he asked that I bring this, or he, myself or Bruno, if we could bring it to him.
I'm sure there's a way to make that happen. So today is proclamation recognizing June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five as Juneteenth National Freedom Day, whereas Juneteenth is the oldest national commemoration of the emancipation of enslaved African-Americans in the United States and is a profoundly significant celebration of freedom symbolizing the end of the oppressive era of slavery in the United States. And whereas, on June nineteenth each year, we look back to this day in eighteen sixty-five on which Union General Gordon Granger led troops into Gavelston, Texas to announce the end of the Civil War and the insidious institution of slavery. Thousands of enslaved people in Texas, among the last to learn of their independence, tasted hard-won freedom for the first time. And whereas, over the next several decades, African-Americans who journeyed out of the South seeking better lives brought Juneteenth celebrations with them. The thousands who settled in California, especially in Los Angeles and the San Francisco Bay Area, taught our state that America's struggle for independence did not end in seventeen seventy-six or eighteen sixty-five, but continues to this day. And whereas, we are urged to reflect on the ongoing cause of freedom for Black Americans, remembering that though General Granger's announcement in eighteen sixty-five called for absolute equality, that vision was and remains far from complete. And whereas, as we recognize the significance of this pivotal moment in history and its enduring impact on the struggle for equality and justice, we urge people of all backgrounds to reflect, celebrate, and continue the journey towards freedom. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five as Juneteenth National Freedom Day in Lake County, passed and adopted the seventeenth day of June, and signed by our Chair, E.J. Crandall.
Anyone from the board have a comment or like to speak on this proclamation? Or if there's anyone on, in the chambers or on Zoom? All right, we'll go ahead and then keep this proclamation, bring it to Mr. Mayo. Yeah, he would be here again, like I said, but he had a, an appointment, so we'll go ahead and close this item and go to the next, which is our six point five, consideration of proposed second reading of ordinance to designate fire hazard severity zones in the local responsibility areas in the unincorporated lands of Lake County, and we have Community Development Director Maria Turner and Terry Lockston here.
Good morning, Maria Turner, Community Development Director. You have before you today a draft ordinance updating the fire hazard severity zones as required by state law. This did come to you last week with a detailed PowerPoint presentation explaining the changes, and I appreciated the robust discussion with the board regarding how that would affect future development. It was approved, but is now for its first reading and is now before you for second reading and adoption.
All right, any comments, Terry? All right, anyone from the board?
No, I'm just gonna state that I, I'm a little confused on how it can be required by the state, and yet we still have to accept it in all honesty. And because of my concerns on the impact of this, there's, for one, there's a lot of, as Supervisor Sabatier pointed out, we have part of Clear Lake in the severity zone, part of the lake itself. So due to the inaccuracies, for one thing, but also for fear and and the realization of how it's going, how it can negatively impact many of our residents as far as insurance and being able to build and other issues, I'm still going to not be able to support it.
All right, go ahead Supervisor Sabatier.
Just as, at an attempt to explain and absolutely understand your perspective, it's kind of like building codes. I remember asking, do we have to approve these codes? It doesn't seem like it makes sense, but if we continue to build based on us not adopting the new building codes, we could end up in some hot water by not following what the legal standard is from the state. And this would be the same thing here. The state has passed their maps. If we don't follow with those same standards, we would potentially put all future development that does not follow with those severities, meaning that level of defensible space, that level of development expectation, that we would potentially put those developments in hot water from those who wish to go after them legally or something like this. So we're, we're kind of, without using a crude metaphor, we're kind of stuck in a corner with nowhere to go other than moving forward with what we're forced to do by the state. But yes, we are absolutely forced to do this without a, without any much commentary to go along with this. So I, I feel your pain on it, and yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
With that, I will go ahead and open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item, six point five? All right, I'll bring it back to the board for action. Lloyd? Just real quick, Lloyd.
If I may, thank you, Mr. Chair. For purposes of the second reading of the ordinance, the motion here would be to just offer the ordinance. And to be more specific and for clarification, just as part of the offering of the ordinance, the title of the ordinance is an ordinance of the County of Lake to designate fire hazard severity zones in the local responsibility areas in the unincorporated lands of Lake County. And to also as a further note, that this offering of the ordinance would be ordinance as amended, and that amendment, as it was stated in the first reading, would be on section three, it's, I'm sorry, section four, in which the year reference is twenty twenty-three should be changed to twenty twenty-five. And so that's just a typographical error. It would be an offering of the ordinance as amended under those terms.
And I'll offer the ordinance as amended under those terms as stated by County Council.
All right. Ordinance has been offered.
Supervisor Owen?
No.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Asmussen?
Aye.
Supervisor Piska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye. All right, that passes four to one zero. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next is our six point six, Sitting as the Lake County Air Quality Management District, Board of Directors, LCAQMD, Fiscal Year twenty-five, twenty-six, Draft Budget Hearing for Budget Units eight seven nine nine, eight seven nine eight. And we have Mr. Doug Earhart here.
Good morning, and I think we got this now.
Yep.
Okay. So this is our, our annual draft budget hearing. It's basically a opportunity to present the budget and take public comment. It's a requirement of the California Health and Safety Code that we do this, Health and Safety Code, Section four zero one three one. And we've done our thirty-day legal notice, and it's a, it's a requirement that's, you know, kind of unique to air districts compared to the counties. So, so with that, you know, we have everything in the memo and our full budget, so we'll kind of, I'm kind of gonna skim over everything, and then we'll make time to have discussion as appropriate and kind of go through whatever your questions and concerns are at that point. So with that, the budget is, you know, a full packet by itself, and we'll go through that as, as needed. And then for the, the following items, the requested board actions, you know, of course, we, we ask that you approve the draft budget as proposed. And then the next item is, air districts are, you know, generally not expected to have further decreases in state subvention with the state budget crisis again. There's always a risk to state funding of air districts, which would be a significant hit to the air district. It's one of the only other funding sources we have other than permit fees. So with that, you know, if we lose state subvention, then permit fees have to make up the difference in the mandated activities of the district. So, so we just want to go on record as continuing to be opposed to reductions in state subvention to air districts. We don't expect it to happen, but it's usually a last minute. It's one of the negotiating things that the state uses to, when they're looking at balancing budgets and stuff, is air district funding is one of those things that's always on the block. Now, staff, traditionally, we've taken a very active role in CAPCOA, which is the State Association, California Association of Air Pollution Control Officers. And in the last couple of years, we have kind of backed out of that, just because we haven't had staffing and time to, to be very active in that. And so our, our goal at this point, of course, we're still not gonna, we're keeping track of what's happening, but we're not as active as we would like to be because, you know, we are a unique air district, and we're the only air district in the state that meets all requirements. So the state and legislature and other air districts and federal officials, our participation in CAPCOA keeps them aware that attainment districts are different and that we should not have the same requirements as places like LA and San Joaquin Valley and other areas that are dealing with severe issues. So with that, you know, we're just, I'm just making you aware that, you know, when we come to full staffing and we have time, we have your support to, to get back involved in that as we go forward. We don't expect that to happen this year, but, you know, if something happens and we do get caught up and with everything, then, you know, we have that option if, if need be, or if there's an issue that comes up that we really need to participate in because it could have significant effect. So then with that, you know, the next item is, you know, districts are mandated to enforce state and federal laws. Many of these things are unfunded. We have a lot of issues going, you know, with health risk and doing risk assessments, and we have a hotspots program that we're being mandated to do reports on. Federal government is cutting back on a lot of programs, so National Weather Service, even their forecasting, you know, they still do forecasting, but now it's a lot more modeling versus actually having a forecaster available. So Lake County, as you know, is a little bit unique in our topography. We're not just a big open area, you know, around the lake we are, but everywhere else in the county, we are not. So we rely, we were relying a lot on forecasting, and we have to do a lot more forecasting and that type of activity ourselves, just because those forecasts look at a macro scale versus the micro scale that we deal with when we're dealing with impacts from sources and things. So, so there's a lot of issues that are going into that. And so with that, the whole point of that, whole discussion is we have a lot of things that were mandated to do, that we have to do as part of our permitting process and other processes. And so some of the voluntary activities are still gonna be put on hold for the foreseeable future until we are able to catch up on mandated activities. And with the cutbacks in the state and federal assistance, there are a lot more things being pushed down to us. So, so that slows our process down. Okay, so of course, you know, we've had a lot of, we've had a lot of issues with recruitment and maintaining fully staff a district for quite a few years. We haven't really been fully staffed in almost ten years, just because we have, there's just regular turnover. So we are continuing and we request the board's guidance and, and direction, I guess, to continue to work with HR and, and admin to develop methods to retain staff and to continue to improve recruitment efforts. So, because we, we will need to increase our staffing in the coming years with all the new programs and assuming that we have to start planning for a higher turnover rate than we would like to see, we are gonna have to have people continually, continually in the training process to take those positions. So, which means we'll have to have more staff on, available and training at, at all times. So, so that's gonna be a long-term effort and, but we want to continue working on it this year and seeing what we can work out. So those are the, the recommended directions. We have a, a number of board awareness items. Some of these you're, you are aware of, but so it's kind of a, just a general update on some of these things, like the Geysers Air Monitoring Program. You know, we're, with that, going through major changes, we're looking at a new MOU this year, or this fiscal year, I should say. The last time the MO, it's been, I think, two thousand and six was the last MOU or somewhere, you know, it's been twenty-plus years since the last time it was updated. And with Northern Sonoma County backing out of a lot of the administrative side, we're having to take on a lot of extra work because we're the impacted side of the hill. So everything blows to Lake County from Sonoma County and Lake County, it all blows into our community. It's very rare that there's an impact in Sonoma County. So, so the increase in workload and, and things is coming, and we are still working with admin and county council, auditor, treasury to come up with ways to try and take on some of those tasks through a consultant or a contractor. But it's a slow process because there's a lot of uniqueness to the way GAMP runs, because, you know, GAMP is not a legal entity, it is a consortium, and it's all funded through industry, so it's non-governmental funds. But if it's held by a government agency, then what standard do you go by? Do you go by standard, you know, for government accounting, or do you go by private industry accounting? And so there's, there's this back and forth where GASP requirements versus private funding, the, the two financial systems don't mesh well. And so we're trying to work through all of those issues right now, still. And it's just, it's a slow process. So anyway. So anyway, long story short, GAMP issues are coming, they're continuing, and they are taking a lot of time. So next issue, state legislature passed, I believe they passed the bill, AB nine, nine fourteen, I, I have to double check on that, but it, it's, it's either passed or it's in the works for, and they believe it's going to pass, which requires, which could require us to do indirect source reporting, and that's a new thing for us. We do deal with a lot of indirect sources, usually on complaint basis, but if we have to do annual reporting and tracking and stuff, then that, that's where permitting and other issues, the cost is going to significantly increase. The legislature is not providing any funding for it because air districts have fee authority. So they expect us to pass fees to cover costs associated with this program and all the other programs that we deal with. So another, you know, this is kind of continuing on the same theme, but the state legislature and ARB have a kind of one size fits all for districts. So that's their philosophy and it comes in all sorts of programs. So let's make things simple for the small districts means, you know, we go from a ten-page guidance document to a two thousand page guidance document on grant programs and things. You know, it can be, it can be very challenging. So our goal is of course to stay, stay engaged in some of these issues and continue to work to represent the district and push to implement programs in the most efficient manner possible for the local community because large districts can absorb a lot of those extra requirements and extra costs. Small rural areas cannot. So it's a constant battle of who needs what and what can we get as an offset to minimize those impacts. So we've been fairly successful in at least reducing some of those impacts through the past, but, you know, it's a, it's an ongoing battle and every year, the last three to five years, we've had significant increase in air quality related legislation going forward. So there are a lot of things that are coming that have in, could have significant impacts and we're still battling to minimize those impacts in Lake County. So of course, I mentioned the air toxics program. Right now, there's, of course, there's three different emissions inventory and toxics reporting requirements at three different sections of the state and they all kind of covered slightly different topics, slightly different sources, but they're all basically the same work, just different sources and different types of reports and they all want different things and they don't want to coordinate. So we have three separate reports being worked on right now and one of them is relating to a potential lawsuit. So that one has top priority to get done by the end of the year and we're looking at that taking anywhere from another three to six months. Another, number of air districts have hired consultants for this and it's anywhere from a hundred thousand to three hundred thousand is what they're paying consultants to do the work that we're doing in-house. So, so that's another one. So in the coming years, we don't know if it's going to happen this year, but it, it's on their radar. EPA has a new asset management program that they've been moving forward with the last three to four years. And basically what they're doing is they are requiring a, they're defining lifespan and replacement frequency schedules for equipment. So air, everything air monitoring will have a lifespan and a replacement schedule, which means, you know, anywhere from, anywhere from every five to ten years, we will have to replace all of our monitoring equipment. And each piece of monitoring equipment ranges from twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars apiece. So we're, you know, and we have probably fifteen different pieces of equipment at the moment. So between geothermal and our ambient monitoring and stuff, so we don't, we just, we don't know exactly what it's going to impact yet, but at a minimum, it'll be five to eight and at the most should be fifteen to, or so. So the potential for a significant impact is, is there and we just don't have the, they're still working on the program and we don't know if it, it might be put on pause for a few years. It might, you know, it might not happen in the next four years, but it, it's probably going to happen. We just don't know exactly how soon. Few more things on our list, particulate monitoring program. You know, we have air monitoring equipment that, you know, is, we've been running for twenty plus years. We've met attainment with it and the state and EPA have wanted us to replace it with other equipment. The other equipment is not passing certification and QA requirements. They're having lots of trouble with it and we don't want to take the risk of losing attainment over something that is not steady and reliable. So there's, we have a grant funds to do this, but we're, we cannot justify moving forward on that until we know the equipment is stable and we've made that clear to EPA and the state. And it's kind of a, we're having this little back and forth battle and just wanted you to be aware of that, that we're not going to put attainment at risk over equipment that's not a hundred percent reliable. So and there's potential that we could get this waived and, you know, at the end of the year too. So, because the wildfires will have fallen off our data. So ozone monitoring program has been, well, is currently being significantly impacted. The state is basically stopping most of their support for the program. So they have been doing calibrations, they come out twice a year, calibrate our equipment, they come out and do an audits. We do the, the daily and weekly and monthly maintenance and operations and all the stuff, but they come out and actually do the physical calibration of it. They have decided that they will no longer do that. And so in order for us to, we're, we're still, we have to have an in-person meeting with them and we had, we had to put that off just for the other issues that we're dealing with. But, but basically what it's going to come down to is we're going to have to purchase more equipment and we're going to have to have dedicated staff that can now calibrate equipment. Because we haven't done that because right now we're required to have five, five people to do quality assurance, monitoring and quality assurance on our ambient monitoring data. That's what we're required by the state and EPA. We don't have that, but now as we add more requirements, if we do calibrations, that's another person that has to be added, so we'll have to have six. You know, and there's, it just keeps adding to the, what we can do and the limited staff that we have. They want everyone to be separate, so the monitoring or the, the person operating the equipment has to be separate from the person who's checking the data, who's separate from the person calibrating, who's separate from the person who's doing audits, who's separate from the supervisor and then the APCO sign off on the data. So you have all these different levels that is being, that are being required and right now I've been signing every level. So, but, you know, that, that puts our data at risk is what's happening. So, so just so you're aware, we have more requirements and it's, we are trying to avoid that and making the point that the state is, if they're eliminating support, we're going to have problems and they need to back away from that. But we haven't had that meeting to find out exactly. We've heard this through the others that have had a meeting yet. So, so when I have that meeting and we get the details and they give us their plan and what we're supposed to be doing, then of course we'll have to come back and have a more detailed discussion to see where we go. So that's, that's probably the, the most significant one is that last one on some of the things that are coming that are going to impact us. So summary, you know, the proposed budget, units for the district are currently balanced. Costs have significantly increased over the last five years. Fees are, we are hoping will increase. We do have a number of projects coming, new geothermal power plant, we have the burn program, revenue that's now coming to the district instead of the fire agencies. Excuse me. So there are a number of things that are changing, but we will be looking at increasing staffing and as we move forward. So we do have a lot of training that we're going to have to be doing in the coming year or two to bring people up to speed. So, so with that, I will end my, and, and my long rambling presentation and then we can go into the details and questions.
Any questions? Supervisor Spatier?
Yeah, don't quote me on it, but it sounds like AB nine fourteen was tabled. Last I see, status ordered to inactive file at the request of Assembly Member Garcia and that was on June second.
Okay.
So, maybe it will remain there or maybe it will come back to life and be resuscitated.
Okay.
But appreciate your presentation and what you've submitted. I, I just want to make a quick statement before I go on. There is, in my opinion, an absolute disconnect between the state and CARB and the reality of what we're doing here on the ground. CARB was at a CSAC conference, I believe it was the chair, I just had her name, but I accidentally clicked off of the tab there. And I said, we're from Lake County, we have some of the cleanest air in America. And her response was, oh, it's not that clean. We're in the top twenty-five counties of all of the United States and that's how CARB feels about the quality of our air. And, and so that to me shows the disconnect of the efforts that are being made and the level that we're at. There is no acknowledgement, there's no kudos, there's no, here's the prize. It's more of a threat that you will lose attainment, that's the prize as you continue getting threatened. So I, I wish there was a way to change that, but absolutely for the number two, to oppose any further state subvention, one hundred percent. In your budget, from what I understand, your reserves from twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six are basically the same at about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. You had some carryover, if I remember correctly, about five hundred and forty thousand dollars. Obviously you had some staffing difficulties, so that's probably where most of the savings come from. But you're also talking about some potential hardship and based on a response you provided to me that you're looking at you, the, the revenues are using the current fees, not the proposed fees that are being proposed that we just discussed and it's coming back to us for some kind of approval. I can't use a crystal ball and tell you exactly what will happen, but being the fact that your fees are from nineteen ninety-six, I doubt that we will keep them exactly at the nineteen ninety-six ones. Most likely they will go up to a certain amount. And so for the fact that you're using current fees rather than potential fees that will increase your revenues, is there any way of increasing your reserves to kind of protect yourself against what the state might do and not stay at three twenty where you've been for the last three years? It's appreciated you haven't dipped into it, but I'm just concerned that the state seems to have this really big willingness to make things more difficult because they see it as the right thing to do. And I don't think it's the wrong thing to do, but it's not a realistic thing to do.
Correct. Yeah. That's why in the last, a few years ago, we created the operating reserve, which we didn't have previously. And that's so that we can set it, start setting aside some of those funds for those eventualities where either like geothermal shuts down for some reason and can't pay their bills for a year, or the state does something crazy and we have significant either cost increase or lose subvention or something like that. So, so that's, that's what that operating reserve is primarily for. But our goal, you know, get through the fee rule and then we'll come back with a reserve policy. And so then we can define what we should be targeting on all of our reserves because right now we, we have reserves and we have a good feel for what we think they need to be at. And yet operating reserve isn't high enough, but we're trying to balance those things and get the staffing issues and those things done first and then work our way to the setting of, getting a policy set so that we have that protection going forward.
So if I may paraphrase what I just heard, go through the process, finish up the fee schedule and then mid-year budget, come back and see if there's any changes that need to be made based on the differences that that does for you.
Right. Yeah. And it will really depend on when the fees, when we get through the process with the fees as to when the billing would happen, it may not, if we don't adopt the fee schedule until later.
It's not going to be retroactive.
Discounted year, we're not going to have any of that revenue during this fiscal year.
Agreed. Agreed. Okay. Thank you.
Do you have your panel? I did, actually. And I just mainly wanted to say thank you for, for your efforts in doing your reporting in-house, saving us, you know, six figures on the reporting and not having a contractor do it. That's a big, big lift and it's much appreciated, your dedication to that. And I believe I know the answer to this, but with the Sonoma County reaping the benefits from the geothermal and yet giving up the, some of the responsibilities for the monitoring, is there any, any financial support coming in from the geothermal as we're not reaping the benefits really as much, but for the air monitoring?
The, the short answer is no, because the, the way the GAMP MOU is set up, industry pays for all of the hard costs and Lake County, Sonoma County, and even CARB, we're donating our time to do specific tasks that didn't cost dollars, they just cost time. So ours was, we do audits of all the monitoring stations, so we, we basically act like the, like CARB does for us. We monitor, we do audits, we verify that they're doing proper monitoring, we participate in the field inspections and things, so we do a lot of that work. Sonoma County, Northern Sonoma was doing the financials. They're backing out of that, of course, because of that whole issue with the government financing versus, but private dollars and, you know, which one do you follow and tracking it through the county system versus through a private, you know, kind of bank account type system. So that's, they're just tired of dealing with the financials and the financial process in Sonoma County because they use the county treasury at Sonoma County, which much bigger, has a lot more levels of issues to deal with. I, I'll say that nicely. And then the state was providing, they were doing X-ray analysis, they were doing, you know, so we send filters to them, they would do the evaluation for metals and things, so they'd do lab work for us. That was their part of the buy-in to the GAMP MOU. So the state doesn't do that anymore and if they do, they charge for it. Sonoma County is backing out and doesn't want to participate because of their issues and so, yeah, it's falling to us and so.
How much more of a lift is it for us?
They had two people working on it in Sonoma County. So, you know, one was the primary and then a backup. So, I mean, we're looking at, to be honest, I, I don't know, you know, it'll be a full financial person or we'll have to hire a consultant to do it for us. So kind of depends on what we, what we can work out with admin and the auditor and treasury and stuff to figure out how we can deal with the financial part of it. So it's, but just, just overseeing it is a significant amount of our time.
Sure. That's unfortunate that we're not getting any support. Thank you.
Well, that's, that, it all comes out of permit fees, so.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the GAMP item too. I know it's been a, a long process and I'm glad that you're going to be bringing this back to us sometime soon. Do you have a timeline on when this might be coming back to us? I know, I know it's been hard.
For the MOU?
For the MOU.
We just started working on revisions, so we're, we're hoping, the, the group that was working on it, we're hoping to have a draft by the end of the calendar year.
Okay.
So it'd probably be January, February to have something that.
Okay. Great.
But if we have a, a really rough draft before then, we can bring it back to at least get some input as to which way, where things are going and make sure that, you know, we don't spend a lot of time on something that's wasted effort.
Yep. That's probably a good idea. Great. Thank you.
Supervisor Spatier?
Happy to take on the burden and liability of that, as long as Sonoma County is willing to pay us for what we need to be able to take it on. And if they don't, I think that we should have a conversation about us maybe having a conversation with Sonoma County, that you can't just drop the ball on something that you were responsible for now forcing it into our hands and not providing any resources in exchange. I just, I, I think that it's, it's cocky.
Yeah.
They have more power than us and they just get to drop the ball on us and that's not how it works. And I, I, keep us posted, please.
Yeah, our, our one major negotiating point is each of the regulatory agencies gets two votes on the GAMP consortium for any item. If they are no longer participating in the function of the GAMP consortium, then they should be giving up their votes. So, you know, you don't get to make a decision if you don't help.
I feel like we've been here before.
So, I mean, that's, that's the only thing we have right now that, that we can work on. But yeah, I'll go bring back once we know, get a little bit farther down the road.
Thank you.
All right. We'll open it up to the public. If there's anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item.
No.
I'll bring it back to the board. Lloyd, did you want to?
So it appears there's five items for your board to consider with this being a public hearing. Each of those items would need to be, the suggestion here would be to have those items be approved by motion. And I could walk your board through them if your board wishes for me to do so.
Yes, you can.
So the first item would be a So, the first item would be a motion to approve the fiscal year '25, '26 draft budget proposed for the district, the Lake County Air Quality Management District.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So, just as a preface, this, items two through five, and Director Gerhardt has alluded to this, that the rest of the items seems to be, can be effectuated by, by direction of staff, is that right?
Yeah, we've done it through, we write it this way because at times, the board has wanted to do a more formal version, and we've had the direction of the board, and we've also had the lump resolution of, you know, we adopt all these things and agree to go forward in Gerhardt's direction, so.
So, for, and I'll start with item two. For that particular item, it could be a motion your board could move, or motion to direct staff to oppose any further state subvention cuts to the district, and support the district to pursue increased state subvention funding to cover legislative slash state mandates in rural communities, seek additional funding to support the additional workload placed on the district.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Then on to item three, that would be a motion to direct staff to continue to participate on the CAPCO of Board of Directors when feasible, and to take a more active role in future years to represent the needs and interests of Lake County related to air quality program funding, regulations, and benefits.
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Then on to item four, it would be a motion to direct staff to continue the policy directive that health impacts, health risks, health-based complaints and mandated programs slash requirements be given top priority, followed by activities that have regulatory timeframes and other funded activities, which includes new permit issuance, periodic inspections, and placing voluntary programs are on hold until all mandated programs are up to date.
So moved.
Second.
You had something?
Yeah, I just, I'm, I guess I'm slightly uncomfortable with putting that on record in a vote, that voluntary programs are on hold. I don't have a list of all the voluntary programs, and I think that every department has mandates that they have to follow, and then do their best for the other voluntary programs, but we don't provide a on-record vote that it's okay to put these voluntary programs on hold until further notice. If there's cracks in the capacity, if there's hours in the day that become open, then I think those things should be looked at and not, it just, it seems awkward to do it for one department and not other departments, because every department has its own struggles. I will be voting no if this goes to a vote as is, just because I don't want to say we're holding voluntary stuff. I think they can all have a level of importance depending on the individuals that are looking for it. We've had some of these discussions with some of agricultural folks that wanted to use some of the programs that were available, that we directed them towards the state. I just, for this one, I feel uncomfortable. I think they're going to be doing their best, they're going to be doing the mandates first because that obviously is a priority, but I don't make these statements for others, and I guess I'm curious as to why I would for one department and not others.
Could we, did you want to answer, or could we amend the?
Good. I was just going to point, one, we're not a department, so this is a district with health and safety code mandates, which, you know, were mandated by health and safety code for specific programs and specific responsibilities. We are a regulatory agency. The voluntary programs, the, really only the voluntary programs that we have are grant programs, and grant programs are significant time commitments in order to run them. So, as soon as we have time available, we will run them, but what this does is say, we, you're giving us direction to do all the mandated programs and then work on those programs, which, like grants that are voluntary.
Well, you have the preference, though, to put that, like, last, because you understand. But if we put "hold," then that basically gives you the chance to say, "We're not doing it," because, you know, I, you, I tend to see it the way you're putting it.
I just think that, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I feel this is us shielding you from complaints by approving this. We're trying to give you the resources to refill your positions, get a staff that can do all of these things. We support you, we don't want to throw you under the bus, but I also don't want to create a layer of linus blanket to make it more comfortable, because again, every department has the discomfort of this situation, but you're mandated by the state, so we can't, we can't get between you and the state.
Yeah, no, and I have no problem changing that, that verbiage to be more appropriate to what you're comfortable with, and put voluntary programs as available or as time permits, and instead of, you know, on hold.
When feasible.
Or when feasible, or, yeah.
So, one possible way on that motion language that I submitted for your board's consideration is to retain the motion language, but on that last clause, as part of the direction of staff, to have staff come back to your board when it's, in situations where there's a proposal to place voluntary programs on hold until all mandated programs are up to date. That can be part of the direction of staff, so that it's not a board direction of staff to place them on hold now, it's a direction of staff to bring it back to your board if there is a proposal or the plan for your board's consideration, place it on hold, so your board will have an opportunity to state your input.
Why don't we just prioritize mandated programs?
Just get rid of the last sentence.
That's, that's fine with us.
Okay.
You know, having to put together another presentation, that's a lot of extra work.
Yeah, my motion's amended to remove the last sentence.
Or that would be the last clause, starting with, "And placing voluntary programs?"
Voluntary programs are on hold until all mandated programs are up to date, that's the last sentence. Scratch off.
Okay.
And so, that would be the part of the motion.
Yeah, amended.
She amended with that change, all second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 500.
Then the last item would be a motion to direct staff to work with county human resources and county administration to continue to review and develop improved recruitment and retention proposals for the district, and to bring proposals to the Board of Directors for discussion and/or direction.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I just think this is another moot point. Every department has the chance, we've already opened up dialogue at this moment in time. I'm not sure that it needs to have a specific, again, if I do this for your department, your district, then this would be something that I would do similarly for all others, because again, the issue of retention, the issue of recruitment is a county-wide issue, and we've already opened dialogue, and I don't see the need to, again, put it on record for one department slash district and not all others.
With that, should we amend, or are you fine with?
I mean, I feel like we've been on record all, on this before, we've had several items, so I'm comfortable moving forward with it.
All right, and you're comfortable with the second?
Yeah.
So, they're comfortable with, yeah, so we'll just take.
I can add a little clarification if you'd like.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to say, yeah, the reason for doing this is that, it's again, comes back to health and safety code, where the Board of Directors of the Air District is the one that is supposed to be working to figure out these issues. So, as the county Board of Supervisors, you are doing that, you're working with HR, and you're working with the county on, on all the MOUs and all these things, but what we're doing is putting, tying that to the Board of Directors as well, saying, "Continue to work through this process that is already in process," so that we can solve this problem going forward. So, so it's kind of giving us that tie between the two different entities.
Okay. Did you want to?
Appreciate the explanation, not going to change my vote.
So, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion carries, four to one. With that, I think we have all, all of your items covered, and so, thank you for that. If there's not anything else, we'll move on to our next.
Thank you.
Did we need a break?
Thank you.
Or did we want to push through a couple more of these?
I'm good to push.
All right, we're good. All right, so we have our 6.7, public hearing, consideration of resolution dedicating Herndon Cemetery as Pioneer Memorial Park. Looks like we have, Susan has Matthew Rothstein here. Rothstein?
Good morning, supervisors.
There comes Lars too, sorry about that.
Good morning, supervisors. Matthew Rothstein, Chief Deputy County Administrative Officer, and many thanks to Lars Ewing for joining for this item. In 2006, your predecessor board approved Resolution 2006-116, declaring abandonment of Herndon Pioneer Cemetery as a place of future interment. You may be aware, this cemetery has also been referred to as Lower Lake Pioneer Cemetery, Herndon Copsie Pioneer Cemetery, and Copsie Creek Cemetery, for example. Resolution 2006-116 expressed that board's intent, the parcel would be dedicated as a memorial park. As noted in the memo to your board, the parcel has now been surveyed and a legal description was created, and all copings, which are the borders or frames that surround grave plots, improvements, and embellishments that were found to be a danger to health, safety, comfort, or welfare of the public have likewise been removed. A public notice was published once a week for four weeks, and the final step is to bring this resolution before your board for approval. Your board's adoption of today's resolution will ratify Resolution Number 2006-116 and deem the cemetery abandoned, and officially dedicate the parcel as Pioneer Memorial Park. This action by your board is not intended to increase maintenance obligations or public use, but rather just to formally acknowledge the abandonment of the cemetery. And I'd be remiss to not offer many thanks to County Surveyor Vance Ricks and Kara Salmon for collaborating with CAO Parker, Shannon Heenan, and others from administration on this effort, as well as our Public Services Director Lars Ewing and your team. Thank you all very much, and staff recommends your board adopt the resolution.
Any questions from the board?
Just in time.
All right, anyone from the public?
No.
All right, we'll bring it back to the board for action. Lloyd, did you have anything?
Just to offer the resolution.
And so, this is basically ratifying something that happened in '06? Okay. All right, I'm just going to state that I will be voting no. I appreciate this being designated and abandoned and all that, but to honor a pioneer memorial, a pioneer is someone who's settled, and it's really a glorified name for folks that have settled in an area that was already once occupied, and of people that haven't had proper burials, and at times, we struggle with some of these different AB 52 laws, so I'm just going to state that that's why I'll be voting no. So, Supervisor Sabatier?
Would you be into the idea of a different name, if that was the case?
I'm fine with them naming it what it is, and going forward, I don't want to cause extra burden, but, but, yeah, I mean, I don't want to work, I don't want to have no more name issues, I just can't support this.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, all right. With that, if there's any action to be taken?
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
All right, Supervisor Owen?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Rosmussen?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
No. It passes 4-1-0. All right, thank you, gentlemen. And so, next, do we have next, or do we want to take a break?
Yeah.
Five? All right, we will take a break for five minutes, and we'll catch you back after that. All right, we will take a break for five minutes, and we'll catch you back after that.
From the first, from the 18th, from Wednesday.
Gotcha.
So do you know the date?
All right, welcome back. Jessica will be joining us shortly. We're moving on to, was it 6.8? Yes. 6.8, Consideration of Memorandum of Understanding by and between the Lake County Employees Association, Units Number Three, Four, and Five, and the County of Lake for July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2029. And I'll give the floor to Casey Moreno.
Thank you. Casey Moreno, Deputy County Administration Officer. I am joined with Stephen Carter, Assistant CAO, Deanna Rico, Deputy HR Director, and Pam Samick, HR Director. And so we have presented before your board today the updated memorandum of understanding for Lake County Employees Association, Units Three, Four, and Five. This is the largest unit for the county workforce, consisting of 811 allocations. So the MOU will implement the 2024 comp study, 97.5% of the market median, followed by three years of COLAs, cost of living adjustment of 3.5%. It also incorporated the side letters, increased bilingual pay from 2.5% to $225 per month, changed the meet and confer members from three to five, added a 2.5% differential or ad pay for obtaining a Class AB license, and then fixed the longevity to being out, the eligibility is now determined on employees' total continuous service and total qualifying hours worked. So of the 2.9 million that this will cost, 763,000 of it is general fund. There are 56 positions that are Y-rated. Y-rated is positions that are not getting an increase, so they may be Y-rated at zero, so they would not receive this increase, but next year receive the COLA of 3.5%. Or they may be Y-rated negative, so until that rate comes up, they would not receive a COLA. No current county employee is going to receive a deduction, though. So there are 56 positions that are Y-rated. Thirty-three of those are Y-rated negative, and 23 are Y-rated at zero.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Just a quick question before I make my statement. No COLA, or yes, a COLA, just no raises until the Y-rated is back to above zero?
The position would receive the COLA, but they wouldn't see the raise until they, that position comes up to where they're currently at.
So if they're at negative 1.5, they get a 3.5 COLA, they'll see a 2% increase?
Correct.
Just wanted to make sure that it is there.
Yes.
Okay. So I'm just going to make a statement for 6.8 through 6.16, so I don't have to repeat myself on every single one of those. We are looking at a total for this specific one, 2.9, but overall about $5 million in increases and raises. I think the people who work here work their butts off. But I have a problem with a four-year contract into a very unpredictable environment of economics. I do not agree with any of these raises that are being proposed today. I would be more in agreeance if it was a across-the-board COLA increase for everybody, since everybody is feeling the pain of things being more expensive, not select few and not others. And so it's difficult, but I have no trust in what both the federal government and the state government are doing. We have no knowledge of it, and for us to get involved in a four-year contract of promising something, in my opinion, is not a position that we should take at this moment in time. I would have loved to see a one-year. I will give kudos to staff. I've been involved in multiple negotiations in the six years that I've been here. This was actually what I would call negotiations, instead of a take-it-or-leave-it type of scenario. I won't go into details of how negotiations went, but I just want to say thank you to those who led. That was Carlos Torres and Casey Moreno at the end. Just want to say I appreciate the fact that there seemed to be dialogue, there seemed to be some back and forth, and that's what I would love to see between groups when going through negotiations, not this is what we're offering you, take it or leave it. So I will not repeat myself over the next items, but please note that I will be voting no on these.
All right. Any other comments from the board? Open it up to the public? No hands in Zoom? We'll bring it back to the board for action.
I'll move to approve the memorandum of understanding MOU by and between the Lake County Employees Association, LCEA Units Three, Four, and Five, and the County of Lake for July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2029.
Second.
So I have a motion to end a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 4-1-0. All right. Let's see, next we have 6.9, Consideration of Memorandum of Understanding by and between the Lake County Correctional Officers Association and the County of Lake for July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2029. Casey?
Thank you. So the LCCOA, Lake County Correctional Officers Association, Unit Six, consists of 61 allocations. So again, we are implementing the compensation study of 97.5% with three years following of COLAs of 3.5%. We incorporated the side letters and changed the meet and confer members from two to three members. Bilingual pay was increased from 2.5% to $225 per month. Changed in working above class from 180 hours to 15 workdays, which is consistent with other units. Changed the county benefit contribution from 1,500 to an 80/20 split. Effective July 1st, members may now voluntarily denote, donate five hours of leave into the leave bank for that unit. There were multiple ad pays that were, there was a couple that were removed, and then some that were added on, including some differential pays. The longevity was updated to be consistent with other units, and so that is now based on the total number of continuous service and hours. This unit does consist of 100% general fund positions, and there is only one position that is Y-rated at zero, so they will see the COLA next year.
All right. Any, go ahead, Vice Chair?
You appear to be not having a document that has a draft motion attached to it in my packet.
We just seen the motion from County Council.
Yes, so Lloyd, if you can help us with that one, with the motion. I will open it up to the public if there's anyone. I see anything from the board? All right, so I'll bring it back to the board for action, and Lloyd, when you get a chance.
So it would be a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Lake County Correctional Officers Association and the County of Lake for July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2029.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 4-1-0. All right, next we have our 6.10, Consideration of Memorandum of Understanding by and between the Lake County Deputy District Attorneys Association and the County of Lake for July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2029. Casey?
Thank you. So the Lake County Deputy District Association, Attorneys Association, Unit Eight, consists of 23 allocations. So again, implementing the 2024 compensation study at 97.5% with 3.5% COLAs for the next three years. We incorporated the side letters and changed the bilingual pay from 2.5% to 225 per month. Also updated the holiday schedule to align with the court's official holiday calendar, as attorneys are required to still be here. And then the longevity modified that to being the same as other units with the continuous service and qualifying hours worked. So of the 360,000 estimated costs, 337,000 is general fund, and there are no Y-rated positions.
All right. Is there any comments from the board? If not, open it up to the public. Bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the memorandum of understanding by and between the Lake County Deputy District Attorneys Association, LCDDA, Unit Eight, and the County of Lake for July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2029.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 4-1-0. All right. Next, we have 6.11, Consideration of Memorandum of Understanding by and between the Lake County Safety Employees Association and the County of Lake for July 1st, 2025 and June, through June 30th, 2029. Casey?
Thank you. So Lake County Safety Employees Association, Unit 10, has 34 total allocations. We are implementing the 2024 compensation study at 97.5% of the market median with three years following of 3.5% COLAs. We incorporated the side letters, changed bilingual from 2.5% to $225. Changed the county benefit contribution from 1,500 to an 80/20. Changed how seniority is defined for callbacks. Changed the deputy probation officer senior to a supervising deputy probation officer. Established an unpaid assistant firearm instructor position. Added ability for employees on alternate schedules to use accrual leave to supplement holiday pay. Added one additional weapons defense instructor. Updated overtime definition, and then modified the longevity to be in line with other units based on continuous service and total qualifying hours worked. I did notice that the estimated cost is incorrect. This is actually the estimated cost for Unit Eight, I believe. But the actual cost is $296,932.32. So of that, the $237,609.42 is general fund, and there are no Y-rated positions.
All right, any questions from the board? We'll open it up to the public. Anyone from the public? I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve memorandum of understanding MOU by and between the Lake County Safety Employees Association, LCSEA, Unit 10, and the County of Lake for July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2029.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 4-1-0. All right. Next, we have a 6.13, Consideration of Resolution Establishing Salaries and Benefits. What's that?
One, two.
One, two.
Oh, I marked it, I don't know why.
Now forget.
Thank you. I know, sorry, deputies, I apologize, I wasn't trying to skip you. Consideration of Memorandum of Understandings by and between the Lake County Deputy Sheriff's Association and the County of Lake for July 1st, 2025, June 30th, through June 30th, 2028?
Yes, so this is a three-year agreement. And so the Lake County Deputy Sheriff's Association consists of 56 allocations. They did negotiate to have a three-year agreement, so the county is implementing the 2024 compensation study at 97.5% of the market median with two years following of 3.5% COLAs. We incorporated the existing side letters, revised the bilingual incentive pay from 2.5% to 225 per month, and then adjusted various ad pays. They are still capped, though, at three special assignments. Increased on-call pay rates from 20 to 50 for weekdays and 25 to 75 for weekends, which is consistent with other MOUs. Extended the department head's authority to assign on-call duties. Overtime was updated. Revised the grievance procedure, and longevity was modified to be total continuous service and total qualifying hours worked. This is 100% general fund with no Y-rated positions.
All right, any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? All right, bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve memorandum of understanding by and between the Lake County Deputy Sheriff's Association, LCDSA, Unit 16, and the County of Lake for July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2028.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 4-1-0. Next is 6.13, Consideration of Resolution Establishing Salaries and Benefits for Employees Assigned to the Confidential Unit Section A for July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2029. Go ahead, Casey.
So the Lake County Sheriff's Management Association consists of nine allocations.
Confidential A. How did we get?
Sorry. Okay, confidential unit A consists of 17 allocations. So we are implementing the 2024 compensation study at 97.5% of the market median, and then with three years following of 3.5% COLAs. Changed bilingual incentive pay from 2.5% to $225 per month. And then the longevity was modified to be consistent with other units. This is 100% cost to general fund, and there are seven positions that are Y-rated at negative.
All right, any comments from the board? I will. Thought you had your pen. All right, we have a hand in Zoom. Go ahead and unmute. All right.
Sorry, move me. Good morning, board. I just wanted to speak on behalf of the confidential group, and just to make sure that we do understand that two of the positions that are in my office, payroll analyst, senior and payroll specialist, with the negative Y-rating, this does mean, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, Casey, that no increase whatsoever, not COLAs, nothing, will be received by that position until July 1st of 2027. So while I don't want to stop the whole process, I do want to point that out, that there are some positions that, my understanding is that nothing will be received at all for a couple of years, depending on where they landed. And so we may need to be reviewing those on a case-by-case basis. So I just want to mention that.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes, while Genevieve-
Yes, while Genevieve Harrington is on, I want to ask her a question real quick and appreciate your comment. What level of involvement were you in this process to kind of see the balancing act that the resources and our funding does at the end of this approval?
I really wasn't involved in the process, I mean, and we're definitely reviewing and looking now. And overall, I do, I do support what's being presented today. I just want to make it clear that some, there are some outliers that we do need to recognize and just expect to see those later.
Thank you for your response.
All right, I'll open it up to the public, still? That's right. All right, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to adopt or all for the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
Supervisor Owen?
Aye.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay.
Supervisor Asmussen?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes, and it passes 4-1-0. Next, we have 6.14, consideration of resolution establishing salaries and benefits for employees assigned to the confidential unit section B for July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2029.
So the confidential unit section B consists of five allocations. Implement the 2024 compensation study at 97.5% with three years following of 3.5% COLAs. Changing bilingual incentive pay from 2.5% to $225. And the longevity was modified the same as the previous ones have been. All positions are Y rated at zero, so they will see, so there is not a cost to general fund, but they will see a COLA next year on July 1.
Any comments from the board? Open it up to the public. No hands in Zoom, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
All aye for the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
Supervisor Owen?
Aye.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay.
Supervisor Asmussen?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye. Resolution passes 4-1-0. Next is 6.15, consideration of memorandum of understanding by and between the Lake County Sheriff's Management Association and the County of Lake for July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2029.
So Lake County Sheriff's Management Association, Unit 17, consists of nine allocations. We will implement the 2024 compensation study at 97.5% of the market median with three years following of 3.5% COLAs. We incorporate the existing side letters into the MOU and longevity eligibility is now consistent with the other units. This is 100% cost to general fund and there are no Y rated positions.
All right, any comments from the board? I'll open it up to the public. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the memorandum of understanding by and between the Lake County Sheriff's Management Association, LCSA, Unit 17, and the County of Lake for July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2029.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 4-1-0. Next, we have 6.16, consideration of resolution establishing salaries and benefits for management employees for the period from July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2029. Casey.
So the management unit 1 consists of 114 allocations. So implementing the 2024 compensation study at 97.5% of market median with three years following of 3.5% COLAs. We changed the bilingual incentive pay from 2.5% to 225. And the longevity eligibility is now consistent with the previous units. Of the estimated cost of about $890,330,000 is general fund. There are a total of 17 Y rated positions, 12 are negative and 5 are zero.
All right, any comments from the board? Any comments from the public, I'll open it up. All right. Not seeing any, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, all aye for the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
Supervisor Owen?
Aye.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay.
Supervisor Asmussen?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes. All right, resolution passes 4-1-0. And I think that concludes this portion of the agenda and thank you very much for presenting those and all the hard work you've all done in the negotiations.
Great job.
All right, so we'll go on to 7.7. Consideration of update on the Lake Pomo family sculpture at Historic Courthouse Museum project and B, consideration of amendment, 1 to the agreement with Nordhammer Art Foundry for the creation and installation of the Lake Pomo family sculpture. And we have Lars Ewing here to present this.
All right, well, good morning board. Lars Ewing, Public Services Director, I'm joined in the chambers here by Carolyn Barili, a museum curator, and Anthony Guardino, Assistant Curator, and the Maquette, and Katie Galvani, Deputy Director. We're hopeful that there will be some members of the museum's tribal advisory committee on Zoom, given the nature of this non-time, they're trying to get them here, but this is an opportunity. I know they wanted an opportunity to really highlight this. For some background, your board is likely aware that this project has been in the works for quite some time. The county is under contract with Nordhammer Art Foundry in Kelseyville to design, fabricate, and install a life-size, this is not life-size, but a life-size Lake Pomo family statue for, on the grounds of the courthouse museum. Really what drove this agenda item is a no-cost time extension to the contract with the foundry. They had some delays of a personal nature that county staff felt were justified to allow the extension. And especially since they're in progress with a lot of work. So it's also an opportunity to, as the board is considering that amendment, extending time for six months. So to address that piece, it would be a six-month extension out to December 30, 2025. So we anticipate this being completed in the next six months or so. It's also an opportunity to present what we're calling the Maquette. This has been done for, I think, about a year, give or take. And I saw some pictures of the castings that are done, life-size casting. So there is progress above and beyond the Maquette here. But it really is, it's been a labor of love, you know, going back not just years, decades, you know, but generations, certainly. You know, that's an opportunity to really honor the Lake Pomo people. So it's, here we are with at least something tangible to show that we're working toward that. So I'm going to pause there because the work has been done by others, not me. I'll invite Carolyn, Anthony, Katie, if you'd like to speak. But really, it's an opportunity for the board to see this, consider, of course, the amendment. And Johanna, let me ask you if there are any on Zoom that may have joined. It would be, is it Les or is it Millie Simon?
Les or Millie?
Yeah.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I'm wondering if we can put the Maquette in an area where we can zoom on it on the camera so that people on Zoom, people on Peg TV can really see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go, yeah.
We can. Turn it too, so they can see it all. I'll turn it in a little bit.
I think it looks amazing.
Oh, I love it.
Yeah, I know, Les and Wanda Quiddaquid and Millie, they put a lot of work into this. Just, there's other notable elders that have, from the native community that have as well. They always are on me. Everybody for, yeah, it'd be great for donations. Because I know this is an initiative to catch donations to ensure that. Yeah, the funding for this has been a combination of public donations, tribal donations, a grant from the, oh boy, I forget it in writing here, but we did receive a grant along with a contribution from the county board supervisors. So all in all, you know, we are progressing, seeing this is certainly a milestone.
All right. All right, any other comments from the board? I'll open it up to the public? Yeah. Go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier.
I just have a quick question. We're extending the contract, is the contract with full installation being done by December 31st or casting overall being done and installation at a later time?
Well, it's a good question because the contract includes installation, but the county is responsible for the base. So we were progressing toward that to have it ready for installation. So by contract installation would be before June, or excuse me, before December 30, 2025, barring any other unforeseen circumstances.
Okay, thank you. Looking forward to it.
What kind of base?
We are looking at a granite base, I believe.
Oh, awesome, I was thinking that, that would be phenomenal.
Yeah.
All right.
That is phenomenal, I love it.
Good.
There's no, no, no lesser, okay.
And if your board is willing to entertain a subsequent item, for a timed item later, I'd really like the opportunity to give them a chance to see this and, you know, do it at time. That was a mea culpa here. We have this, the amendment, well, the agreement expires the end of this month and so we were time-bound there, given everything that is on the agenda, getting a timed item was a challenge. So we'll work with the members of the tribal advisory committee to come back and potentially at that point, we may have, we may have something of a larger, a larger opportunity to bring in and carry.
All right.
Where are we keeping this until then?
This is down, I believe, at the museum, right? Yeah, the courthouse museum.
Okay, great.
Go ahead.
One more question. I take it that it's not just going to be installed and we walk away, there's going to be some sort of celebration, some sort of, okay, okay.
Whether we planned on that or not, the direction is there. And yes, of course, it wouldn't just be, it's there one day and then we do nothing for it. So absolutely, yeah, that'll be arranged.
Awesome.
I'm impressed.
Well, I appreciate the, you know, the museum staff, both current and former staff who are no longer with the county, worked hard, but most importantly, the tribal representatives who had a lot of input and obviously a lot of history with this.
With that, I guess, well, there's just action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve amendment 1 to the agreement for the creation and installation of the Lake Pomo family sculpture at Historic Courthouse Museum and direct staff to coordinate work toward project completion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0-0, thank you.
I have one more question, what was the price tag on this, I just didn't see it.
$230,000 was, is the contract amount.
Okay.
Not for that.
Not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to take this till you can put it in the?
Unless you'd like to leave it up here for today.
I'd say yes.
Yes.
Leave it here today.
I would say yes, too.
All right.
You may wish to take up 7.2 and then maybe a five-minute break before we start our 11 o'clock.
All right, so we'll go ahead and take up 7.2, consideration of an update on Blue Ribbon Committee priorities and coalition letters sent on behalf of the committee seeking state general fund or proposition for funding.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In your packets and for the public, there was some documentation and a copy of the proposed letter that the Blue Ribbon Committee was sending to the state. But essentially what we have is, with the current state budget, as we set today, the state has removed all of the money, which is upwards of probably over $14 million, for Blue Ribbon Committee projects that were recommended in '23 and '24. So while I would have preferred to bring an item to have this full board weigh in on talking to the state about this, that just wasn't possible because of the speed that everything's moving and the Blue Ribbon Committee Chair, you know, really wanted to get a letter out. So that committee had decided that, you know, we could send a letter from Blue Ribbon Committee members that were there representing different agencies that are part of that. So last week, as the board's representative on the Blue Ribbon Committee, I signed into the letter as my position as a supervisor and a member of Blue Ribbon to ask the state to reconsider and please provide, you know, some budget funding for these projects from '23 and '24. So that's kind of an update on what's going on and I have not heard anything yet from many, any further conversations with the state about whether or not budget money will be added. But really just wanted to bring attention to the full board as well as our community members because the lake is really the crown jewel of Lake County. I mean, it's, it's got the cultural and historic significance. It's a huge part of providing for our economic development here and it's vitally important to the survival of our county. And all these projects have, you know, gone through a lot of vetting and they are meant to improve our lake and keep the cultural value of it as well as continue to provide public recreation which will help our economy into the future. So thank you.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yeah, I'm in support of this letter and thank you for bringing it. But I do want to mention, we have our governance workshop the beginning of every year. And what we did talk about this year was building our platform so that we can move quicker on these letters. Because if we have it in our legislative platform and our legislative priorities, then a supervisor can send a letter or admin can send a letter that aligns with those when the time, when it's necessary in timing without having to wait for a meeting. So I just want to put it out there and, you know, we did talk about developing that platform in January so that we can commit to that, so that we don't lose time on these important issues going forward.
And I'll just comment, I appreciate that. And I think, you know, there's been other situations where it's been, you know, problematic. We don't have time to get these on the board agendas and we were not even going to have a regular meeting for three more weeks. So I think in the future, that would be beneficial to have some more, maybe some better policy on how we can get these out from the board, the whole board.
Supervisor Owen?
Being on the Blue Ribbon Committee myself, I would, if it's not too late, I'd like to sign on to that as well, if it's appropriate.
It's actually, we sent it on Fridays.
Oh, okay, okay, it just, the draft.
It was just moving very fast and the emails were just, there was just no time to really do much else.
That's okay, that's.
That's why, you know, I went ahead.
I'm just in support of it.
Moved with what we could, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments, and if not, I'll open it up to the public. Right, we'll close public input and bring it back to the board for action.
It was just information, Mr. Chair.
Oh, it was, yeah, I'm seeing that, sorry about that. All right. With that, we'll close 7.2 and we'll take a five-minute break and come back at 11:01. Right. Ish. Oh, there we go. Sorry. Okay, welcome back to the Board of Supervisors meeting. We're going to move on to 6.17. Hearing, consideration of appeal of Planning Commission's revocation of major use permit UP 20-50 for commercial outdoor cannabis cultivation of up to 110 square feet located at 26102 19N 16 Road, Lake Pillsbury, APN 001 030-36. Permittee John Evans and Pillsbury Family Farms. Community Development Director Maria Turner. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, yeah, and we'll have to make sure everyone's sworn in that is here on behalf of this item and hearing.
Okay, if you're on Zoom and you want to give testimony, please raise your hand in Zoom so I can do the swearing in.
I'm an attorney on behalf of the farm. Would you like me to swear in as well?
That would not be necessary because attorneys typically don't provide testimony.
Great. It's your argument. Thank you.
I see no hands on Zoom. So if you're in the chambers, please raise your right hand. Use only swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Good morning. Maria Turner, Community Development Director. You have before you today an appeal of the Planning Commission's revocation action for major use permit UP 20-50 for Pillsbury Family Farms. I would just like to highlight a few items in the Planning Commission staff report of the project timeline. On January 27th, 2022, the major use permit was approved by the Planning Commission. It included the following conditions of approval. A10, all applicants and/or employees shall undergo and pass a live scan background check by the Lake County Sheriff's Department. A6, and this is just a portion of it, all necessary permits shall be attained from applicable federal, state, and county agencies having jurisdiction over this project prior to this use permit being of any force or effect, including but not limited to the Department of Cannabis Control. This use permit was for outdoor cultivation of cannabis of up to 110,000 square feet. As the board is already aware, California has a dual licensing requirement, which requires both a state license and a local permit in order to operate legally. So the use permit was granted on January 27th. Following that year, or in that year later, on August 6th is when the state received the application for a state license. Our annual site monitoring visit took place on October 12th, that same year, 2022, and cultivation was observed. This is without a state license and without a live scan for the LLC Partner Director, Chief Financial Officer, and main farmer, Mr. Quail. That next year, mid-year that next year, on July 24th, 2023, the state license was issued. September 1st, 2023, on the next annual site monitoring visit, cultivation was again observed. And still no background check for Mr. Quail. April 9th, 2024, I sent a notice of intent to revoke for two reasons. One, cultivating without the state license in 2022, and multiple years of no live scan report for Mr. Quail. Mr. Quail did respond to that letter requesting more information regarding the reasons for the disqualification. And actually, sorry, let me go back. On April 9th, the notice of intent to recommend revocation was issued. On April 12th, live scan application for Mr. Quail was submitted to the sheriff's office. This process that goes to the sheriff's office gets sent out to, for the federal background check, comes back with a detailed report to the sheriff's office, and then they send community development a one-page report saying this person is either qualified or disqualified to participate in a cannabis-related business. They do not tell us the reasons for it, but the criteria that they use in their deliberation is listed on their application. It is included as one of the attachments from the Planning Commission hearing on your agenda item. When Mr. Quail requested additional information regarding his disqualification, we directed him to the sheriff's office for more information. Additionally, I let them know that I was going to wait while he conferred with the sheriff's office regarding that disqualification. And so I just sort of set it aside for a while until they, until I received multiple emails from their representative at that time demanding a hearing. So I scheduled a hearing before the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission took action to revoke the use permit. A request for appeal was received in a timely manner and listed five reasons as its basis for the appeal. So I will now go into staff response to those five reasons. The first was the applicant diligently pursued its state license. Again, I would refer back to the timeline. The use permit was issued in January. The license was not applied for until August. And cultivation began that season without the state license and without the background information, or the background check. Section 23.13, subsection 1, subsection, I don't know the lawyeries for that one, but double I, I, I.
Romanet.
Thank you. Allows for major use permit to be deemed authorized to engage in cannabis cultivation in instances where there is an actual delay in the state's processing. It is this department's position that cultivating prior to submitting your license application does not constitute a delay on the state's part. The second reason for the appeal is that pending criminal record expungement should delay board action. Again, this department was delaying action so that the permetee could confer with the sheriff's office until the permetees' representative demanded in multiple emails that we go to hearing. So we did so. Multiple years of cultivating without a background check is a clear violation of the conditions of approval. Third reason, due process and discretion should be exercised fairly. Due process was followed in this instance. The March 27th, 2025 Planning Commission hearing was held in accordance to Chapter 21 processes. The application was received in a timely manner and then scheduled before this board also in compliance with Chapter 21 due process. The fourth reason for the appeal is that there's no ongoing public safety risk. And staff response to that is that public safety risk was actually not a determination for the recommendation of revocation. That was based on cultivation without a state license and ongoing cultivation in violation of the condition of approval requiring the background check. The last reason for the appeal was that the disqualification of one individual member should not invalidate the entire permit. When we did, when the department took this to the Planning Commission, we included the articles of incorporation over a few years that listed Mr. Quail as an additional incorporator, a chief financial officer, and a director. Additionally, it was based on the history of the permit in which Mr. Quail was one of the primary people representing that permit, as well as the primary farmer. Not just some employee that is easily set aside. Therefore, the recommendation of this department remains to deny the appeal of the Planning Commission's revocation of major use permit UP 20-50 for commercial outdoor cannabis cultivation of up to 110,000 square feet located at 26102 19N 16 Road in Lake Pillsbury, Permittee John Evans and Pillsbury Family Farms LLC in concept and direct staff to prepare findings of fact. That concludes my presentation. The representative for the permetee is present, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do you think we have questions or should, all right.
Happy to listen.
Sir?
Thank you, board, Mr. Crandell, Chair, members of the board. My name is Mr. Tall Sagiv. I'm an attorney. I represent Pillsbury Family Farms. Thank you, Maria, for the timeline. We understand the issues. We've distilled it down to the three conditional requirements. That is A10, A6, and A2. A2 and A6 effectively being you need a state license in order to put plants in the ground. So a different component of this timeline that really hasn't been discussed is in October 2022, plants were observed in the ground. The state license was not issued yet, but the conditional use permit was. And conditional use permit is of no force and effect until those conditions are met. One of the conditions, getting the state license. A de minimis amount of cannabis was grown, 8,000 square feet on 110,000 square foot lot. It was observed. There's no question that it was, it was abated. There was no issue of abatement. There's a kind of a procedural question there in that, you know, an officer was there, but no, you know, abatement notice was issued. Nevertheless, I don't think there's any dispute that the crop was destroyed. It's gone. It was dealt with. We have evidence supporting that in our appeal. We have recorded video conversation with the director and the permetees stating that, you know, that event wasn't going to be held against them, that it wasn't going to form a basis for revocation. And, you know, we have that in an email from Mr. Armalong as well in 2023, well after it occurred, saying, these guys have a green light to grow. So we see it as kind of a non-issue. It's moot at this point. Taxes was collected in 2022. Plants were underground with a license in 2023. Taxes was collected in 2023. Plants were in the ground in 2024. Taxes were collected in 2024. We're grappling, trying to understand why this de minimis cultivation kind of right in this nebulous timeline after the conditional use permit is issued, but before the state license is issued, is now, almost three years later, forming the basis for revocation. A very asymmetrical and, you know, highly prejudicial form of punishment to a licensed permatee that's been paying taxes all this time and has since cured the issue. Right? If the issue is not having a state license in 2022, a state license was then issued. So we feel that 2022 cultivation is a non-issue to that extent. The live scan of former officer and director Justin Quail was the other objective basis raised for revocation. It is a requirement. In March of March 27th, 2025, the recommendation came from the CDD to revoke the license. And on April 1st, five days later, Mr. Quail resigned. And there had been communications between him, trying to expunge his record. He did subsequently successfully, in Sonoma County Superior Court, reduce felonies down to misdemeanors and have those misdemeanors expunged. To the extent that that record was in question, it is now clear. Nevertheless, he removed himself through resignation, and the board took deliberate action through their bylaws and through the California Corporations Code. It accepted his resignation, restructured the entity, and he is no longer a part of the entity. We've submitted evidence to that effect. We've submitted the minutes of the board, his resignation, a new statement of information filed with the Secretary of State that shows that Mr. Quail is no longer an officer or a director of the board. That's physical evidence that we've attached. And frankly, you know, the idea that he's still an integral member or a lead role, it's just, you know, it's not supported by facts. He has a new job. We provided his new job description and job application that was accepted with Green Ox Distribution in Humboldt County. He works for them now. He does not work for the farm anymore, not as an employee, not as an officer, and not as a director. To that extent, that issue is also moot. It's a non-issue. He's not there anymore. For it to form the basis of revocation would be to hamstring a company that generates tax revenue, that can provide jobs, that creates a product on, you know, a former officer and director's conduct that was rectified. You know, he's still working to, you know, get his record expunged to a point that, you know, would be acceptable. It's a long process. It's a long road. You know, these cannabis offenses are... They're draconian. They're antiquated. It's hard. You have to go through the court proceedings. It costs a lot of money. It takes a lot of time. He's working on it. But separately from that, he's not part of the company anymore. So based on those two points, we're effectively asking that the board not revoke the permit. And I would submit all those points.
Any questions from the board at this point? Or would we rather open it up to anyone that would like to speak on this? Did you have more to add?
No, I'm open to any questions. I realize it's a consolidated version of events, but the director, you know, laid out the facts as they are. I feel like, you know, it really distills down to some plants in the ground in 2022 and, you know, a former officer and director that's not here anymore.
I would like to hear from the audience first and then bring it back.
Yes, I wanted to hear from the public before I weigh in.
All right. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this that's already swore in?
Hello, my name is Skylar Leawal. I'm Pillsbury Family Farms. And one of the things that I've followed along with this county, the Cannabis Task Force, and everything is that, honestly, my farm is truly a model farm. You guys are asking and chasing the money in the structure and all these different shell companies that cannabis is trying to hide under, when in reality, the water board requires that the property owner be on that application. We did that. The county requires that the applicant, the landowner, can be on that. We did that. We took it a step further and said, "Let's put the landowner on the company." We did that. We have been doing everything we possibly could. We have been as transparent as possible. But that transparency has been used against us, and it's a new term that I've had to come to accept, but it's really hard. It's called coerced complacency. And that's what happened here. In February 7th of 2025 of this year, we asked Maria, "What else do we need to do?" She said, "You have to go to the sheriff's office to get the sheriff to change his mind." Nowhere in the state of California have I found that we have to go to the sheriff directly to get them reverse their decision on a background disqualification. That process is done through the courts. He did that. But yet she still pushed forward, and you've seen that on March 27th of 2025. This director is going backwards and setting your county back in the Reagan era where there still is a war on drugs, where people with expungements don't have a chance in this county. And that is truly, truly terrifying to exclude people that go through that process, to say that one employee, if I hired several employees, Apasta Farms hired several different employees with criminal backgrounds, and they found out that one of those employees couldn't pass, they have to shut down that entire permit? This is a dangerous precedence you guys are standing in. And in true honesty, we have come here, and we have spoken, we have pushed. Yes, we're annoying. Yes, we ask a lot of questions. We want to know where the straight path forward is. When we asked her, "Where in the ordinance can we find that we have to go to the sheriff?" She said, "There is no ordinance outlining how to petition the sheriff to reverse their decision on a background disqualification." That process is done in court. The undersheriff said that in court. He said it in an email to us. We have done everything we could. We've gone to a meeting with Eddie Crandall, and we sat in that meeting with her, and she said, "Oh, I'm not going to take your license," but yet here we are. We have an administrative director who takes her power and uses it against people like us, people like John, who are technically qualified to own a license. He was arrested in 2015. That was the cutoff date. Even in your equity grant application, it says 2015 was the cutoff day for that. John Evans qualifies, so why take away his right and his opportunity from his land use permit? What are you guys doing? What is this administrative person doing? I have filed several complaints. If filing complaints is a nuisance, then let's take away the public's right to file complaints against county employees, honestly. I believe that, you know, I'm sorry that I asked questions about her process. There was no notice of abatement. Under Article 31112, high severity violations constitute a notice of abatement. And you go and you look at that section, you have to go to Chapter 13 to get a notice issued. Linda did not follow the steps and procedures, but Maria kept instructing her to do something outside of that scope. What does that say? In Alvarez Farms, yes, they had a lot of environmental issues. We don't have that issue. We have done everything we possibly could to be as transparent. We asked, "Where is the notice to abate?" We weren't issued one. "Where is the order to abate?" We weren't issued one. I asked, "Where is the process?" I was told there is no process, but we had to write a report. She's telling you, "We requested this revocation." In September and October, she issued the notice. And I requested in October to proceed with the October 10th. That was not done. So for her to perpetuate the story that we are requesting, are you guys now allowing permetees to tell the county what to do? No, staff has to tell the county what the permetees need to do. If she's pushing it forward on October 10th, and she's claiming that she needs more information, and I abated the crop, there was no fine or fee issued, but you guys want to see those fines and fees issued, and she's taking it away from the county. She is taking that eradication that when our sheriffs are getting grant money to come out to eradicate illegal cannabis that is being grown, why are they being denied their grant money to come out? They should have been there when I had to eradicate. I don't care if I had to pay them. They should have been there because they are getting grant money to go out and eradicate illegal commercial cannabis. If fish and wildlife has to be present for illegal commercial cannabis eradication, why wasn't that done on my farm? Why is my farm being treated differently? Because I would choose to ask questions because I'm a minority person? Because I partnered up with an elder who qualifies? Because I decided to open my doors to somebody who's disabled? But that's not allowed in this county. I want to have black people join, but I can't do that because of her regulations that she wants to perpetuate that are going outside of state law. I don't believe we need the California regulation if we have Maria law. I really don't. There is no purpose. She is a king in her own sense. Thank you.
Did you want to speak to that or wait till?
I'll wait.
Okay. Sir?
I would just reiterate a number of points that, you know, our position is that 2022 was de minimis and a non-issue. There are procedural deficiencies. I appreciate that they were raised. Maybe I didn't push them hard enough. But if you look at Attachment 6 of the March staff report, I mean, it's riddled with issues. The checkboxes aren't checked. It says, you know, "in quotes," you know, "it needs" "further" "review." There's no mention of a background check in it. Follow-up needed. You know, the compliance and non-compliance checkboxes are unchecked. Again, no notice to abate was issued despite code enforcement officer being on site. These are procedural shortcomings on the county's part, no doubt. And that's, you know, that happens. It happens. There's procedural missteps on the permetees' part as well. This is a new era we're living in. You know, 2016 changed the world for everyone. And I think, you know, we're in those growing pains. But I think there's some asymmetry in revocation. It's, you know, as the farm just pointed out, you know, they're model permetees. You know, there's no other issues. They got their state license. That's a lot of work, a lot of time, and a lot of money. And, you know, again, we're struggling with why something that happened three years ago is now today, as we sit here, forming the basis for revocation. And then again, I'd highlight that the only issue that was brought up was Mr. Quail's live scan. Everybody else is in compliance. Mr. Evans is in compliance. The farm's in compliance. And, you know, Mr. Quail is out as a result. And it is hurtful to the farm, and they do feel that, and there's emotions here. But I think objectively, you know, what we're looking at is, does a non-qualified individual still play an active role, an integral role in the corporation? And he does not. And I think that's what the board needs to hang its hat on. And if that's not the case, if there's new evidence that comes to light, or if the case develops, or if there's something shown to the contrary, that's a different issue. But that's not really in front of us. What we have is evidentiary documentation that the corporation acted deliberately as a body and reorganized as a result of the CDD's letter, March 25th.
All right, sir, Mr. Evans, did you want to speak?
My name's John Evans. I'm the CEO of Pillsbury Family Farms and the owner of the property. I've been trying to get through this process for six years to get the license and establish our farm as a legal business in the county and contribute to the county in a legal manner and was encouraged... It was told that I qualified and was encouraged to become legal. And it has been a long, difficult struggle financially and to deal with all the regulations that come along with the relegalization. And we've tried our best to comply to those regulations. And we've had some issues, but to my understanding, they've been resolved. And at this point, if those issues are resolved, after all of my efforts to comply and become a legal business, I'm being shut down. And I have a difficult time accepting that. It's reasonable, after all the things I was told about being encouraged to become legal and that you were going to try to facilitate and help us comply with the regulations and become a legal operating farm in the county. And after all this struggle to see it come and be denied so cavalierly, I have problems with that. So I'd like to see our license continue and to have a better relationship with the county and maintain our business and contribute to the community and the county. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
And I would just piggyback on those points that the board doesn't have to revoke. It's not mandatory. It's not a bright line rule here. It may. But, you know, the county ordinance 60.12A allows resolution to be found. It can modify the permit rather than revoke it. It can accept the board's reorganization.
Mr. Green? I know you swore in, so...
I did. Michael Green, and I did submit a letter, came in a little later. I apologize for that. There were some email issues. But the two major points have already been raised by counsel and appellantants. We do have a complicated ordinance, and the state laws that accompany our local land use ordinance is equally complicated. Way before I joined county employment and joined this board, I did work to help rally the troops of our legacy growers within the county to convince the board at the time to create a regulatory framework where local growers could take advantage of the legalization options that were being offered under Proposition 64. We passed Measure C, and that was actually the prerequisite that finally convinced the board to enact a regulatory scheme. So the decision for this county to become a regulating county is not only endorsed by multiple boards over the last 10 years, but by the voters of this county, not once but twice, in 2016 with Measure C and with Measure K in 2018. The abated crop in 2022 was taxed. They paid taxes on that. So they did not have a state license, for sure. But this county, through the treasury tax collector at least, had constructive knowledge that these plants were being grown, that they took the money. The two major points raised by counsel, which I also raised in my letter, are this. By the terms of the use permit itself, it doesn't take force and effect until all conditions are met. So when code enforcement went up there with the inspection for the compliance in October 2022, and they noted right there that it didn't have a state license, that in and of itself should signal to Community Development and to you today that the use permit itself at that time was of no use and effect. It was still a work in progress. It needed to be perfected by future work and future showings by the applicant. And that happened. Now, I'm not aware within the county process that there's any final checklist that is made, but when the 2023 inspection was made and a state license was observed, and there were checkboxes for all the employee checks, even if they were mistaken checkboxes, that signals to me that at that point in time, CDD was satisfied that they had complied with the use permit in all material respects. So if there was a problem in 2022 that should have blocked that finding, what happened to that? So absent a valid use permit in effect in 2022, if they were going to do anything on the abatement, it should have been under Chapter 13. A notice to abate should have been issued. Follow-up action should have been taken, as noted in the 2022 inspection report. Yet none of that happened. So to the extent that the cultivation is an issue, I agree with counsel. That's de minimis. It could have been handled through a code enforcement issue, but it wasn't. And with the issuance of the state license and the conduct of not one but two successful inspections after that, they were in good standing. To the issue of Mr. Quail, it was not a moot point by the time the Planning Commission did it, but it is a moot point at this point. He has filed his removal from the company. The bylaws have been amended. He's no longer a company principal. It is interesting to find that the state background check process differed somewhat... It is interesting to find that the state background check process differed somewhat from the the counties. And I don't really know why. And, you know, we don't need to go into that now because Mr. Quail has basically taken himself off of the company. But Proposition 64 was written in a way so that legacy growers who do have past convictions for cannabis-related conduct that is no longer illegal, at least not to a felony extent under state law, don't have those convictions count against them automatically. They can be considered, but they also outline a process in Business Professions Code that the sheriff shall undertake a review and and do a case-by-case review of that. It shouldn't be a slam dunk. So I don't know if the expungements that have since been processed would have done that. I don't know if there's other issues, but the main point is that Mr. Quail's involvement is no longer involvement. And so it was not moot when the planning commission heard this, but it is moot today. Your board does have discretion. It may modify the use permit to accept the remaining owners as the valid owners of record for this permit and to take understanding that as much as we want to hold our licensed cultivators accountable, the county also must be held accountable for having understandable processes. And unless and until we find a final checklist that is going to let a grower know that if they pay their taxes and they get their state license, but they didn't hit other checkboxes on the county process, let them know that so that we can have common agreement between growers and the county as to you got your state license, you satisfied your use permit, you're active now, and now we're going to process you and violations under Chapter 21 instead of Chapter 13. But we don't have that in place right now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers? Or on Zoom?
I would just add one final comment, if I may. This is, and it speaks to Mr. Green's point. This is a land use permit and violations are to be quit or cured. And and I think what we've heard here today, the totality of the analysis is that everything that's been alleged has either been quit by crop destruction or cured by the conditions of the permit being met through the state license and the live scan issue being resolved.
All right. With that, I'll bring it back to the board. Did you have anything to add? Okay. And so I know there was some questions. I didn't know. I think I'll go ahead, Vice Chair.
Well, I mean, I think with the facts that community development had and the planning commission had and based on our current ordinances and policies, you know, they they acted appropriately. But at this point, you know, with the fact that Mr. Quail is out and there is a state license, I'm just wondering or, you know, thinking that, you know, we're going to we're going to still shut him down. It's been three years later. I have concerns with that. You know, now that we're in the situation we're in now where Mr. Quail is out of the company. I mean, yes, he's got, I mean, at the time of his background, that was an appropriate denial of his his operation. But that's been cured and and on top of that, he's he's not an operator anymore. So I'm just concerned about shutting him down based on, you know, where we're at today and the fact that, you know, I don't know how the new ordinance is going to turn out, but, you know, there may be changes in provisions on on how we we apply, you know, denials and things like that. So that's my thoughts right now.
I know Supervisor Owen had hers up and then. Supervisor Owen?
I'm a little late to be able to look at your the staff report. And the reason why was I have not been able to load it. And Supervisor Sabatier just took me in a back door. So so I haven't been able to really over, you know, look at the staff report. However, the planning commission that had they when did this come before the planning commission?
March 27 of this year.
Okay, and has it been revisited since Mr. Quail has removed himself?
An appeal was filed on the planning commission's decision, so it would not have gone back to them.
After after he left.
Right. The deprocess would have directed that appeal to the board.
Okay, thank you. And then I still have some concerns on prior activity prior to being before it was legal to actually grow. So I do share your your concerns as far as setting a a precedent from the landowners and the growers taking and taking advantage prior to it being legal and set in stone that they actually can grow. So I do have concerns with that as I believe it does set a kind of a mindset. With him removing himself, that does help with that. That process as far as alleviating one of the issues, there was three issues. And again, like I said, I I haven't been able to fully read this because I didn't have access to it.
Thank you. If I could clarify, there were actually two issues, two main ones. One was cultivation without the state license in 2022. The other was cultivation for a number of years without satisfying the requirement for a background check.
And that's what I that's what I said. I do share your concerns with that.
And I'm sorry if I made that the first requirement for the background check that we were notified of came in March 27, 2025. And four days later, he resigned. In other words, if there had been earlier requests, they haven't been documented. We don't have them on the record. I don't have them on the record. I don't know if it's part of the initial application process, but it came to our attention at council that on March 27, 2025, he was not cleared. And through our guidance and through their deliberate decision-making, he left to avoid any uncertainty. That's that was the basis for that move, and it wasn't taken lightly.
But the growing prior to it being legal to grow, having your licenses.
That separate issue is goes to early activation, which I'm also struggling to unpack. We don't have a lot of documentation on early activation. Planning director has laid out an excellent timeline. We can see how it happens. You have a legacy grower. You have Prop 64. You have the county looking to lockstep with the state. And you have divergence. There's questions. You have the conditions of the use permit starting to get met. Metric, land use, sequo. All of these things are occurring. We have this in our appeal. We have communications back and forth from the director to the permadee. It happened. It's not a big deal. We understand. We understand. We understand. We hear this over and over again. It 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 just gives rise to to. It's unsettling. We don't we don't really understand why now it's forming the basis. I don't have any early activation documentation to provide for you, but I just want to bring that to light.
All right, thank you. And next time, wait for me to give you authorization to. Yeah.
Sorry.
It's okay. It's okay, but we just they have questions. I want to make sure they get them in. I know you'll be able to answer them after they ask anyhow, but just want to make sure they get theirs.
Chair Crandall, if I may respond to that. The conditions of approval were signed by the permatee. They're public documents. They're available to the applicants prior to the planning commission earring and are open for any amendments at that time. They were signed by Mr. Evans. The background checks for Mr. Evans and Ms. Leywell were actually submitted early on in the application process, just not Mr. Quail's. So I'm pretty sure that the that the applicant and subsequent permatee were aware of the requirement of a background check.
Supervisor Pasca?
So just a question about that. Is March the first time? When did your department ask for that background check?
It wasn't until I was doing a final review of the permit that I realized that only two of the three permadees had submitted a background check and Mr. Quail's was missing. That's when I notified them.
And that was in just the spring?
It was it was prior to issuing that notice of intent to revoke. I sent out an email asking if you have record. We have no record of of Mr. Quail's background check getting submitted. If you have record, please let us know. I I did not receive anything, so I added that to the notice of intent to recommend revocation.
Okay. And I don't know if you have any information on the state license, but were there any consequences for that first season growing without the license? The state license?
Not that I know of at the state level. The day after our site visit, the crop was destroyed by our snowstorms. We considered that issue abated.
Right, but cultivation still occurred regardless.
It did. I don't recall. I know that we inquired to the state to see if there had been a state license at that time, received three declarations from staff at the state level that there there was not a permit or a license issued at that time.
So the state didn't push back to to your knowledge?
Not that I know of.
Okay. And then they had the state license before they cultivated?
The next year, they received it while they were cultivating, but prior to harvesting. So we considered that fine.
Okay, thanks.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Interesting. I I I see mistakes that have occurred from both sides that I I want to help clear up. During the process of approving initially, there is a background check that needs to be done prior to an application being forwarded to the planning commission for approval. Am I correct on that?
We do consider passing the background check as a completeness item. Yes.
Okay.
That is a change apparently from when this one was approved.
And and I feel like based on the inspections that says background checks, yes, that there was continued lack of knowledge that background checks were missing.
We check for background checks of employees for annual.
You only know what you know, right? You only know what you know. You're only checking background checks on those that you feel should have the background check. But I just, if there was no specific request for a background check, yes, they are in violation of it. But if his name is on there from the beginning, I feel we made a mistake by by missing that in the first place in 2022 when it was approved by and ongoing inspections. The issue of the 2022, I don't think you would have found yourself in any different situation just because if they submitted it in August and they didn't get it until July, if they were provided approval from the planning commission in February, there's no way by October that they would also have a license. So they would have been in the same situation and you would have found yourself in the same situation trying to figure out what do we do? The state's in process because it was in process. But there was also six months delay in them even submitting that process. What's strange is that even after all of that, we went out to inspect. Their inspections actually looked decent. There are some violations. I think they needed a demo for a building that didn't have a permit. Those things seem to have been rectified as the next one. Again, highlighting the good inspection and maybe little things like wattles were discussed. But it's strange to continue to provide if there's an issue with the 2022. So I'm 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 concerned that it's kind of a conflicting message, at least that we're we're submitting. I won't even go into the paying the taxes of 2022 because that's confusing to me. He was told that he failed. He is out. I I I try to get away from the individuals and I try to look more as to what 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 is this business? And what do we do with other businesses? And I think we want other businesses to come into compliance. I know I spoke to you yesterday, maybe not a great analogy, but even if a liquor store sells to a minor, we figure out a way to get them to come into compliance and not do that again. We don't just shut down the store. He's gone, but I have a problem. He's still on the files of incorporation, at least when I go to the state website today. And so I can't approve of continuing with somebody who may not be on our paperwork, but they're on the state's paperwork. And so in in my opinion, my suggestion is this, I I I would suggest we put this license on hold until you can prove that he is completely gone and out of and maybe they're in process and the state can take a year for process. I don't know. But I just went to the DCC online today and it still shows Justin Quail. And in my opinion, I don't want to say, keep doing what you're doing. It looks like you guys have cleared everything when DCC is saying no, he's still absolutely active. And so to me, that disqualifies me from being able to say, I agree with your appeal and we should go ahead and reverse what the planning commission did. But at the same time, I don't want to shut down a business that can come into compliance, but he needs to be out of the picture until I don't know. That's that's my position. It's it's awkward to see things on a state level when they need to be cleared from the local level. I don't want that conflict of data that is being provided. And so that's where I get stuck. And I think we can find a way, but we're going to have to meet where that way should be.
Supervisor, did you?
Yeah.
Real quick.
I would love to speak to that point because it's a disharmony between the DCC, the regs, when you dig into them, and I did, because we have petitioned with them to remove him from the state license. They're actually at odds with us right now. And I'm I cited this in my recent letter to the board. I'm at the Code of Regulations, Section 15023, which is the DCC's licensing regs. 14 calendar days of the effective date of ownership change. That's what they're looking for. Change ownership, as was the case here, reorganization could be a change of ownership. Except, a change of ownership does not occur when one or more owners leave the business by transferring their ownership interest to the other existing owners. So by statute, the DCC, I don't want to say they don't care, but as a bright line rule, they're saying, we don't, we don't need to rush this. We don't need to do anything. We don't need to respond to you. Under the regs, you know, you're not changing ownership. We're approaching them a little differently. We're coming at this as a reorganization, pointing them to the corporation's code, but it's taking time. So I appreciate that comment. It's something I looked into myself.
Supervisor Owen?
I appreciate you looking that up, Mr. Sabatier. And and it's good to know that you you're already working on that. So thank you on that. The early activation is was that given to them before they started growing? The first time or the second time?
I don't have that information on hand.
Okay. And then secondly, with them losing their crop in 2022 with the snowstorm. And I was told that you actually paid taxes on that crap crop. Sorry. Was it a discounted because of the snowstorm? What did what was collected and what should have been collected on a full? On, you know, if it was a full crop. So was there a discount on that?
I don't have knowledge of that. However, if you were to consider it, never mind. I I was just thinking about Supervisor Sabatier's comment regarding treating it like any other business. And in case of taxation, the accessory recorder's office does actually issue additional taxation for improvements that they see that are not done with permits as well. And so taxation is never tied to entitlement or authorization.
Sure, sure. I was just curious. You know, we had mentioned that he had mentioned that there was taxes paid in 2022?
I would defer that to the administrative office since their taxes were paid through the equity grant and not by the permatee.
It was about $50,000.
Supervisor Sabatier?
And I just, if you don't mind, I wanted to respond to my colleague. The early activation still required. It was an early activation permit from the county that still required a state license as well. So
Before.
Whether it's early activation or real activation, it still required appropriate paperwork in order to take action. So
Okay.
I don't.
So they were in violation.
It makes a difference.
Okay.
If there's not anything else, I'll, did you have something to add or?
I did.
Briefly, if we can?
Briefly, we were issued early activation. That was in 2019, but it did end up getting refunded to us in the year prior. It was in 2021. And yes, you might see Mr. Justin Quail on the state license, but as the state application goes for each individual owner, they also have to submit a copy of their background check. And then the state also can look at that by a case-by-case basis and requests what I like to call disclosures from each applicant based on their criminal background. And that was how the state made their determination to issue that license to Mr. Quail.
All right. Okay, and so I wanted to was going to speak first, but I didn't want to like go in between all of your comments. I've been heavily involved with this at the request of the party. They're in my district, so I did my best. I knew that there was there was changeover as well. So I know, Moria, you weren't like, the directors from the start, right? I think prior was the Mr. De Leon and.
It was here after the issuance of the permit.
Right. And so I know that there's, again, I go back to this just because I know, bless you. I know that there becomes changeover, things like that. I can I can go back to the initial, I think it was the initial visit visit in October. Prior to that, actually, I have one more note that. Prior to that, actually, I have one more note that one of the comments that I continuously received from Mr. Quail was that he had done a scan in 17 and then there was no record of it somewhere. He would look for it, go, went to the sheriff's to find it and it wasn't found. And so that's why he did another one, but of course it was requested. I just remembered that being brought up. Yeah, from their initial filing. I remember they filed back then, but for some reason it kind of sat in hiatus until the 19.
I'm not aware of what filing he would have been referring to. The sheriff's office and CDD both went back in our records and found no filing for Mr. Quail. Though if it was in 2017, it would not necessarily have been connected in 2020 when they applied for their use permit.
And I just bring that up because I know that there was some folks that worked there previously as well that are no longer here, that basically went through the paperwork at one time. Specifically Satir Ham, I remember that being brought. And then there was a switch to Eric Porter. And then, you know, it just, I don't even know if the.
The sheriff's office also did not have any record.
Okay. Did you?
I just wanted to add something real quick and wasn't sure on the timeline. I know that we paused background checks because of COVID. Do you know what the timeline of that was and when we restarted it?
I was not here during COVID. Sorry. I am not aware of any suspension.
And I'm wondering if, sorry to put you on the spot, Sheriff Bingham, but I'm wondering if you recollect approximately when we paused the background check and when we brought it back? I know that because of COVID, we didn't really want to go through the process. If it was an unnecessary process, dealing with criminals was one thing. Doing background checks for licenses would be done at a later time. Just wondering what that timeframe was.
Don't know, but that might explain why it was a condition of approval and not a completeness item. Thank you. That is helpful. I was not aware that there was ever any suspension of background checks.
Am I the only one that remembers that or?
I think so. It's hazy.
I would prefer the sheriff respond if he has a response, but I'm sure the applicant wants to say yes.
Mr. Chair, just to confirm and double check, since Sheriff Bingham is about to speak, just to double check if he's been sworn in.
I don't know if you were sworn in or?
I was not.
Okay. Then let's do that real fast.
All right. Right hand raised. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I do not recall a pause in the, during COVID. If there was one, I believe it was for a short amount of time. More than couldn't, would not have been more than six months when we figured out how to handle applicants of this nature that were noncriminal, not required by law. If it was, it was a very short amount of time.
Okay.
I could look into that and get those, get that information for you if it was necessary.
And it may have been employees and not applicants. It may have been a bit of a different situation, but thank you.
I do recall suspending applications for teachers, volunteers for school programs, SAL programs and that for a while. And just focusing on the requirements of the law for criminal behavior and things that we had to do as far as sentencing and probation. But for how long, I don't recall.
And so, so I just wanted to bring that up because I just know by being involved, that's been a just topic of discussion. And back to the October meeting or the site visit, I went with Andrew Amalung and Linda as we went around the actual grow. And I know too, that in being there, there was a mention about the structure that was recommended by a previous consultant. And I think that also plays a role in some of the issues is you know, they've hired consultants that, you know, gave them some advice here and there. And I know that we talked about that in that one meeting that we had when you were on Zoom and I think it was referred to earlier. It's unfortunate the person that consulted with isn't here. She's usually here. But I think at times that's, that's where some of the mishap happens. We hire consultants and they give us recommendations and things happen. I don't know if that plays a big role, but I know there was a lot more engagement. You know, I did hear and I appreciate what you said, Mr. Green, about the small farm and purpose. I think that's been one of the things that being on the planning commission as well and passing a lot of these, these rules for cannabis growing. It's always been the goal to bring people forward from this timeframe of illegal grow and whatnot. And so, I mean, for me, I see that there has been significant corrective actions taken. I do understand, and I have to state this, there has been a lot of antagonistic behavior at times. There's a lot, I mean, I just have to say it because I can't just, I want to, I am supporting the appellant. But at the same time, the antagonistic behavior does not help. I mean, there's, 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 there's facts and then there's comments and then there's, there's those type of things. And I think that if we want to repair relationships, especially if I'm going to support the appellant, there has to be, there has to be effort on both, you know, from my point of view. So I just, I had to mention that, you know. And I understand at times there's frustration when, when there's scrutiny, people feel singled out. I get that. So I'm not, I'm not ignoring that fact, but I just wanted to make sure to, to highlight that. I know with the leadership change that's in place, I know that we had a little discussion about that with Supervisor Sabatier and then you bringing up that, the ruling for DCC. In the same, I want to say a couple of days later, they court granted expungement. And there was an update on the corporate structure. And of course, that still remains to be seen as they would take that forward from there. Also, I just, I think that if we're going to consider granting the appeal, there would need to be some conditions, of course, I would say. Enhanced monitoring for at least a year or so, or if not more. I mean, it just would depend on the board. Quarterly compliance reports and then immediate notification of any changes in corporate structure or key personnel. I feel that they've taken extraordinary steps to address the issues that led to their revocation proceedings. And I feel that the removal of a disqualified individual and successful expungement demonstrates good faith efforts to achieve full compliance. And that if we denied the appeal at this point, it would penalize a business that would work diligently to remedy past issues and maintain current compliance. I also add that there's been changeover. And so I don't, that's why also I get frustrated with the antagonistic comments because I know there's been at least three different directors, different people that have taken over the, the actual permit process. And so I know in other issues that we've dealt with, there's been a lot of, you know, things dropped or, you know, not carried forward. And so that's, that's another thing that I consider as well. And so I just, I just wanted to mention that and that's where I stand on it. But I don't know if there's anything else to add from anyone else, Vice Chair?
Just want to clarify, I believe you provided information earlier that you did, in fact, you have filed new articles of incorporation with the state of California. That there's this mix up with whatever, however the DCC operates. They still have them on there, but you have filed those articles, those new articles.
We have and they're attached to our letter to the board. They were filed in April. And they show that Justin Quail is no longer an officer or a director.
Okay.
Supervisor Piska.
I agree with your recommendations.
I am also, I do want to see the, those three items that you stated, the enhanced monitoring or the, the monitoring for the year, the quarterly reports and any documents of status changes immediately if, if that were to be the case.
Right.
We already have code and policy to notify us of any changes, so I don't know that that rule is necessary. I'm not sure what you would be wanting us to look for in quarterly reports. What I would recommend is should the board want to uphold the appeal? That we, since Mr. Quail has gone through considerable effort regarding expunging his record, I'd like to see him be able to rejoin Pillsbury Family Farms because he is an integral member as soon as he can pass a background check. I'd like the board to recognize that. Since it seems like the board is looking towards getting this back to a permit in good standing, let's just get them back to any other permit that is in good standing as well.
Supervisor Sabatier and Supervisor Owen.
I just wanted to say, I don't feel like asking staff to do more work for this specific applicant. I think we need to scrutinize them just as anyone else and making sure that they are not in violation of anything. But if you look at past behavior, it started off really rocky. And then outside of the background check, it looked like their farm was being run the way that we would like to see our farms with some slight little issues here and there, but nothing that seemed, nothing was highlighted in your report outside of those two issues that existed.
The previous structure that Chair Crandall referred to was something that was easily remedied. We only recommend revocation as a very last resort. Most of the items that we see when we go onsite are easily corrected.
And I appreciate that.
Supervisor Owen.
Are you currently growing at this moment?
My understanding is that there is not plants in the ground.
Okay, that's, that was my question.
I issued many emails to Mr. Quail during our ongoing correspondence that if they were to cultivate without him passing a background check, they would be in violation of their conditions of approval. I appreciate that their decision.
And if you're feeling comfortable with the, you know, the path forward, I could support that as well.
Should the board support the appeal? I would really like to see Mr. Quail come back to Pillsbury Family Farms. It's his happy place. And he has done, he has made efforts in order to get back to that.
And you're feeling like these will be good players in the field in the future? In the industry?
As much as I feel like anybody that we visit annually is going to be a good player, sure.
I'd just like to say too, that I know there was a specific timeframe after our meeting that we had on Zoom and whatnot that was referred to. There was an attorney from up north that had got involved and it looked like we were going in the right direction. It seemed as if we were getting somewhere and then all of a sudden it went a different direction. And then we got back into this somewhat adversarial, not we, but I know that it was reported to me that there was an adversarial type of, you know, situation. And I just know that you seem to represent in a way that, that assists accentuating that. I know that there's been a change and there's been statements about litigation, things like that. And that gets very, very scary. And I think at times it makes it very difficult for staff or even elected officials or whoever to make comment because if there's going to be litigation, then a lot of this comes to the time where we have to go into closed session eventually. Another thing is, is that was approached a lot, as it is in my district, this is the place where I have the opportunity. So I really want anybody listening that they get frustrated because us as supervisors don't get involved initially. And it's because it's not necessarily at times at our level. It's in planning or it's in the ministerial phase of things. And so we also do not have the direct, I cannot go to Maria and say, pass this right now because that's illegal according to specific laws and all that county council, if he wants to add to that. But I know at times constituents think that we have that sort of discretionary authority and that's not the case. So I only mention that because I've been involved and engaged with the, with the applicants and others that have the same struggles with different things. And a lot of times it's not only because of changeover, it's also because the amount of breadth that the departments have when it comes to work. So things, you know, sometimes get put on the back burner and not intentionally. So I just have to add that as well. Lloyd, I didn't know if you wanted to know. So, so yeah, I just, I wanted to add those, just that statement. I'm still, you know, I don't know if there's, I agree if you feel that once, you know, Mr. Quail has his background expunged and all of that comes to fruition. If, you know, there's an opportunity for him to join at that time, I'm fine with that as well. I hope that this, you know, this relationship between the county and the applicant can be, you know, remedied. I want to see working in collaboration. That's the whole point of bringing actual legal cannabis to the table here so that we can get away from the illicit grows that are, that are, you know, really burdening us and I think shining or shadowing a dark cloud on the actual legal. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, I just didn't want to leave this item without making a brief statement. Number one, I appreciate your words. Thank you. It's, I think you've had some difficult discussions to deal with. There's a lot of emotions that are involved. It's a business. It's a livelihood. I want to give thanks to the planning department and code enforcement. I know that they work hard to do the things that we ask them to do. And sometimes it can seem confusing and contrasting to, they're not here to want to revoke, but they feel they're working towards what we're asking them to work towards, all of this hard work, and then we reverse it. I appreciate what they do. This is not a strike against them whatsoever. I hope it's not too frustrating with the amount of work that has gone into this process to get it to here, only to have it reversed. I think we are doing the right thing. But please, please keep doing the work that you're doing. I don't know how else to say it, but I just wanted to give kudos to your staff. They are not going out there to cause trouble. They are not going out there to create pain for people. They are doing the job that they believe is what we asked them to do. And there are times where there are some gray areas. And I think in this one, we found ourselves in a gray area.
I just would like to, to add on to what he said, that it's appreciated what the work you've done. And I think that with the removal of Mr. Quail at this moment in time, until things can be expunged and be brought up to code, I think it was very appropriate, your steps. So thank you. And I think if it hadn't been for the changes and even at the state level that has not come, came through at this moment, and since you've attached the copy of that, I think that, that I could support.
So Lloyd, I don't know if there's a specific way.
If your board wishes to grant the appeal with no conditions imposed, right? It would be, the motion would be to grant appeal number, if your board is ready. The language would be the, a motion to grant the appeal, AB 25, get the right number here, AB dash PL dash 25 dash 85 of the planning commission's revocation of major use permit, UP 20 dash 50 for commercial outdoor cannabis cultivation of up to 110,000 square feet located at 26102, 19 N 16 Road, Lake Pillsbury, APN 001 dash 030 dash 36, permutee John Evans slash Pillsbury Family Farms in concept and direct staff to prepare draft findings of fact. And along with that motion, your board would need to, to point out the, what it would, what is, what your board would be in disagreement with, with the staff report. So in addition, as part of this motion, the granting of the appeal would be based on Section 21 dash 60.11A of the county zoning ordinance, which deals with the grounds for revocation of a permit for cause. And in addition, and as a supplement to that, it appears your board's, for your board's consideration, the granting of the appeal would be based on your board's disagreement with staff's findings that were made in the staff report alleging violations of conditions A2, A6, and A10 of that staff report. A2 and A6, I believe it's been covered already. That relates to the cultivation pending a state license approval. And then A10 deals with a live background check condition that's on that permit. So that would be the motion, if your board wishes to grant the appeal in hold with no conditions.
Yeah, I don't want to just approve of the appeal without putting in some terms because there were violations, but we found they have been remedied and that we can move forward. I don't want to deny the fact that there were these violations. So the wording, I don't want to, I don't want to delete or erase something that actually happened. I think the remedy is what was important to us and the ability to come into compliance. And right now, I don't know that we have all the paperwork and everything in front of us to prove that Justin Quail currently is no longer a part of this. I want to make sure that that's in there because or else if we just approve the appeal, then nothing really has to change anymore because we just approved the appeal. I want to make sure we set certain things in stone that this is what we expect to see, that until he can prove that it's been expunged, it can pass a live background check, that he, that there's proof that he no longer is on the paperwork or things like that. I know we have some stuff, but I don't want to make assumptions that that is enough proof to go through that. Because if we just approve of the appeal. go through that. Because if we just approve of the appeal, then even if there's still what we would suggest are violations as suggested by our staff, then that means we're okay with those violations. I want to make sure that it meets, so that everyone else can meet that. I don't want to create a weird area where now others can also follow in that way. So I just complicated everything for that, but I, I would feel more comfortable if there were conditions within our denial that as long as proof has been provided that Justin Quail is no longer a part of the business and that the violations while in existence at the time have been remedied and have been found to be brought into compliance, hence we agree with the appeal to move forward and to continue the license and not revoke the license, something along those lines.
The one thing
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. The, you're, you're right in all those points. The recent letter to the board of supervisors contains the minutes, the bylaws, and the corporate documentation to support the removal. The letter to the board also includes the newly filed statement of information with the Secretary of State. The missing piece, and if there's going to be a condition, is the DCC license, which we can have shortly. I can't represent a timeline, but we're working on it.
Supervisor Owen?
Yeah, I had a little bit of an issue with the statement that we find Maria, Director Maria's right of, or to deny, to remove it inaccurate, but rather, I would rather word it where in light of new information that they have come into compliance. But I have an issue with saying that what she had said is inaccurate because at the time that it was written, it was accurate.
So that part, that portion can be addressed in the draft findings of fact. That can be done by direction to the staff. That was part of the motion. And the findings of fact could reflect that there were past violations that were subsequently remedied. So language can be incorporated in the findings of fact. That'll be submitted to your board within 45 days under the procedural rules for your board's approval. That is distinct from this issue of granting the appeal in part under certain conditions. And that takes us to whatever conditions your board may want to impose. Right now, as it stands, your board, it's noted for your board's consideration that the assertion from the appellant is that Justin Quail has been effectively removed. So it is at your, at your board's option to impose a condition, perhaps, depending if your board wishes to do so, to complete that process of removal within X amount of days and submit such proof to CDD. That can be a condition because it appears from what your board, from this board's discussion that there is, however, an issue, a potential issue of whether or not Justin Quail has been effectively removed or not. That in itself also is somewhat distinct from, from the live scan background requirement. There's been some discussion of that, but I believe what's before your board immediately today on that issue is just the, the proof of removal. So that can be made as a condition to granting the appeal in part.
Perfect.
I think there's a preponderance of evidence that he has been removed. So the, while I'm not against getting some more documentation, I just don't know what the state timelines are. I don't want to say, for example, six months provide that when the state's going to sit on it for nine months potentially. Because we don't know what they're, or maybe you know if there's a timeline.
I, I'm in your boat. I don't know. And we're struggling with it. And it's June and, you know, plants in the ground would be better than not conditioned on, and I should say, there's a self corrective mechanism here as well. You have annual compliance monitoring reports. If any condition is not met, it's going to come to light. If any new violation occurs, it's going to come to light next year. And it would not bode well for petitioner. We understand that. If there is a remedy, if there's a form of relief where permity can continue to operate, subject to the requirement that the DCC license be modified, when we will work diligently with the DCC to get that, I can make that representation. I mean, that would be ideal for us.
What do you want, Mr. Chair?
Well, I mean, if, if you're good with what's been stated, then, you know, I'm fine with it as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, yeah, I think too that we need to keep in mind that, so the expungement and the addition, I know that you had mentioned that you might as well include him having the opportunity to come back once the situation comes
Once he's qualified.
Yeah, once he's qualified. I don't know necessarily what that takes to make him qualify. I know he expunged, but I know he would have to do another background or something like that. I don't know how long that would take or how long we would need to make sure that, I'm just trying to think of a timeline as well.
Well, for us, the timeline isn't important as much as receiving a report from the sheriff's office that Mr. Quail is now qualified.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, so the, the return of Mr. Quail, initially that would be up to, because right now, appellant has alleged, has made a statement that he's been removed.
Right.
So him returning initially would be at least in part up to the appellant or the organization to bring him in. So that's not necessarily before your board as a potential condition.
Okay.
It would be, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the sheriff is.
And just for clarification on that, he would have to go through the courts, get an expungement from the courts, and then that could take some time to have it removed from the criminal history information through the California law enforcement systems. So in order for my department to approve his fingerprint background check, it would have to be removed from his CINI through the California CLAT system, not simply presentation of expungent paperwork from the Superior Court. It would have to be removed from the teletype system essentially, NCIC and CLATs for us to approve that. So when he ran his fingerprints and we got the CLATs returned from DOJ, it would have to be expunged from that record before we could approve the permit.
Thank you. That's actually what I was asking. I just didn't know how to.
And if I may, the, why we greatly appreciate the comment that the director wouldn't want a restriction on the granting of the appeal that Mr. Quail not be allowed, and I'm saying that the complicated way, we appreciate it. But that's not effectively the relief we're looking for either. We would treat him status quo as though any other reorganization were to occur, as though any other employee or any other, you know, director officer would want to come in, they would go through the same hoops and through the same procedure that any, you know, licensed permity would have to use. So it's not really a condition of the approval of the appeal.
All right. All right. With that, Lloyd, was there anything else?
No, just a confirmation of whether or not your board wants to impose certain conditions and what those conditions are. And if that's the case, then it would be a granting of the appeal in part, subject to those conditions.
All right. And then, conditions as stated, I mean, we talked about those.
And what would be those conditions?
Well.
Well, I, it's, I understood it as the, they may not be necessary because we already have to be notified of any changes in corporate status, right? So, so I'm not necessarily seeing unless somebody else wants to weigh in.
Do you have?
So for the fact that right now I can still see his name on DCC, I feel we're in a very gray area. Is it possible for a letter under perjury saying, this has been submitted, he is no longer working for us, and that be the condition, and he cannot work for us until having qualified through the process that already exists? Because right now, I'm saying yes, but I see his name on the DCC and I'm like, there's something, there's something a little weird to that. And so if I have that letter, then you can move on. He shouldn't be involved. And then if there's a process to get him back in, that process is always open for him to come back in, but he has to go through the process.
Okay.
Would that be a possibility?
Lloyd, would that be?
So in terms of that being a condition, the, the only potential issue I see there is it being a letter under penalty of perjury. So because that makes it a part of this proceeding. And so if this proceeding were to conclude, having a follow-up of sorts on that under penalty of perjury may reopen the proceed, may reopen the hearing or proceeding, potentially. And so a confirmation letter may suffice, if your board wishes to impose that as a condition, to submit that to CDD, therefore there'll be written confirmation that such an event has taken place. And then, you know, whatever else documentation that your board may want to impose. But if a letter, a letter in and of itself, a signed letter would suffice as part of your board's condition for granting the appeal in part.
And that's where you, you're fine with that?
I'd be okay with that. Just something in writing that agrees with the fact that this shouldn't be happening. It's on some paper. It's not on all paperwork. We're being told otherwise. Like, it's just, I have to go with facts in front of me and some of the facts seem to contradict some of the facts.
Right. Okay.
And I'd be happy to provide that.
Okay. And so it seems like that would be the condition in there. Lloyd?
So if your board is ready, I could go through the language of granting the appeal in part?
Yes.
So the motion language would be the motion to deny, I'm sorry, the motion to grant the appeal, AB PL 25 dash 85 in part of the planning commission's revocation of major use permit, UP 20 dash 50 for commercial outdoor cannabis cultivation of up to 110,000 square feet located at 26102 19N 16 Road, Lake Pillsbury, APN 001 dash 030 dash 36, permity John Evans slash Pillsbury Family Farms in concept and direct staff to prepare findings of fact. The findings of fact would reflect as part of your board's direction, part of this motion, to reflect the fact that some corporate language of the violations that have taken place in the past and, and the subsequent remedies that have taken place since then. And the, this granting of the appeal in part will be based on the zoning ordinance, Lake County zoning ordinance, section 21 dash 60.11A. And the grant, the granting the appeal in part would be based also on certain conditions imposed to be satisfied by the appellant as it's outlined by Supervisor Sabatier. And that would be the motion.
All right.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Well, thank you very much for
Thank you.
For this. And it looks like we're going to take a lunch?
We do have a 1:00 public hearing.
Okay, so.
You can have it at 1:30.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can have it at 1:30. We'll, we'll go from 1:30 to 1:30.
By email, that confirmation, will that be sufficient? You can direct that to the board.